Being here, welcome to the October 9 regular meeting of the Reston Association Board of Directors. I'm Travis Johnson, President of the Board. Before we begin, let's take a moment to review the ground rules for our discussion and debate. Each Director can briefly speak for up to two times on any motion, but that is only after everyone else has had a chance to speak once. I ask that everyone take this seriously as it will help us keep things moving while ensuring everyone gets the opportunity to speak. Please keep your comments focused on the issue we're discussing. Personal attacks, interruptions, and long statements are either necessary or acceptable and will not be tolerated. Also, please direct all remarks to the Chair. No side conversations or audible side commentary, please. If you'd like to speak, wait to be recognized. In the interest of keeping our meeting on track, if any rules are broken, I will intervene as soon as possible or as soon as the infraction is brought to my attention because unfortunately or fortunately, I don't see everything right away. So, let's get to work and move on to Item B on the agenda, which is approval of the October 9, 2025 Agenda. I'm going to give Director Justkuk a moment to sit down.
Mr. President?
Yes, Eric.
I'll move the adoption of the October 9 Agenda as published with one amendment that we talked about, which is the, we had carried over from last meeting. We had interviewed someone applying for a covenants position. There was a second person who applied, who senses advised us that they can no longer serve, and there was only one opening, so we need, we are in a position where we can address that pending matter, that carried over matter this evening.
Understood. I think we can adopt that with unanimous consent. Is there any issue, Director Justkuk?
I was going to make a motion to defer Item I, the adoption of the 2026 Board Election Calendar. As I understand, it is not ready for Board Review.
That is correct. I've seen that from the COO. All right, then.
But we do have some, something from the Elections Committee. Don't we have a letter or something from?
That's for the contract.
No, no, there was a letter about the, about the calendar that they, we had asked them to make a change to the calendar regarding appeals, and they weren't able to complete that task.
I think that's.
There was an email to the Board, right?
Okay.
So, we need to get that email into the record.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So, if we can leave that, if we can leave that on the agenda, and then we can get that email into record.
Okay. And then, and then we'll continue with your motion. And again, unanimous consent. I don't think I see any concern from the folks who are online, so we'll move ahead with that. Thank you. Moving to Item C, Member Comments. Do we have anyone signed up for this week?
We do not have anyone signed up, but if there's anyone who's online this evening who would like to make a member comment, please raise your hand or send us a message in the chat. We do have one person who would like to make a member comment, Sareka Shider. You've been asked to unmute.
Good evening, Sareka. If you'd like to, thank you for coming for Member Comments. If you would like to make your comments, please keep it to three minutes. Thanks.
Great. Good evening, everyone. I'm Sareka, Chair of the Environmental Advisory Committee. I actually just wanted to say a few words in support of one of the volunteer applicants, Darren Benjamin, for who's applied to be on the Environmental Advisory Committee. I'm not sure, I don't see him online. But I'll make my comments anyway in support of his application. I want to thank him for his interest and for his application as well. He's attended a few EAC meetings and has met with myself, the Board Liaison, and the Start Liaison a few times. And, and he's already taken on some research tasks for us. So, it's always good to have individuals with a different expertise on our committee. And with Darren's governance and policy background, he'd be a welcome addition to our committee. So, I just wanted to say thanks again for his application, and I hope that the Board will consider his application and support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we'll wrap up Member Comments there and move on to Item D, the Consent Calendar. Only thing I see on the consent calendar is September 25th meeting minutes. Is that, is that correct? Okay, cool. So, again, we'll accept that with unanimous consent unless there's any concern from the members of the Board, anyone who's online who would like to speak up. Director Lanza, Director Perry.
Just to note, Director Santa is on as well. She joined at 6:32.
Oh, good. It's fun watching like her ethereal thumb float across the screen. Okay, so hearing no concerns, we'll move on with unanimous consent. Thanks, everybody. And Item E, Volunteer Interviews. I think we have two people.
So, it doesn't look like we have Mr. Benjamin online this evening. He did say he was going to join virtually, but he's not on Zoom at the moment. So, looks like we'll start with Hallie Shakirs. You've been asked to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can, thank you.
Okay, yeah, it's Hallie Shakirs, and thank you for having me. I guess I can't through video. Okay, I am up as a prospective member for the IT Board or IT Committee, and I've been meeting with them for the past couple of months, the meetings. And I guess, is there things you'd like to know about me, my background? I've lived in Reston since 1997 with my family, 1998 with my family. I have three kids. They have all gone through Reston and Herndon Schools. I am an IT professional. I've had over 25 years of experience managing database teams, identity management, development teams, release and deploy teams. I'm familiar with vulnerability management, FinOps, business ops, stakeholder engagement. Pretty much, I've done the whole gamut in the IT industry. And I guess I've been interested in joining the Board for a while, but I've had three young kids. They're a little bit older, so it allows me to do this. From the time that I had to sign my kids up for summer camp years ago where it was by paper, and then I remember you went online, and there were some challenges. And I remember thinking, this is a great example why it should be in the cloud because you needed the scalability to manage the many users online at that time. You have since then moved on. My other experience is I am also on the Board for the Virginia Tech MBA Alumni Advisory Board.
Great, thank you. I think you have a question from Director Santa.
Great, I do. Thank you so much tonight. I'm sorry I couldn't be with you. I'm in sunny Florida. But quick question for you as a longstanding member of the community, and thank you for raising your hand to volunteer. What are some key capabilities you think the Association needs to improve? Either member engagement, operations, service of delivery, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
From the IT perspective or just in general?
Uh, you can answer it however way you'd like.
Well, from IT perspective, I think it's, you know, you've moved to WebTrack, and that's gotten, like I said, I've been here for so long. I've done it through paper where you have to go sit in a room to sign up for your kids. I think there's still room for improvement, user, userability when you're doing your online registration for classes. My, my children have done, have all been pool attendants and swim teams, so I definitely have some thoughts there with the pools and the challenges sometimes they have faced at the pools. For example, I think this summer, one of the pools was constantly broken into, and the money was stolen, and somebody said, why isn't there a camera there? Having electronic payments, it would be great, I think, at the pool. I think that, and, and the wireless at the pool. I think that's something that's also come up a few times.
Thank you. Anyone else on the Board have any questions? Oh, it doesn't look like there are any. Thank you very much for, for making, making yourself available this evening. And I look forward to getting, getting to talk to you afterwards to let you know how this goes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we said that the, Mr. Benjamin is not here.
Correct.
Okay, so we will move on from volunteer interviews. If he pops in, we'll see if we can make some time later on today. Mac, you are up for CEO update.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have much more for you other than all the information we provided pursuant to policy. We provided a video, so if there are questions, happy to take them, but it's information only tonight.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cummins?
On the, Mr. President, on the annual plan, Item 32, it seems to me, can be described as completed. That is the employee handbook. We have it in our materials, and it seems we can change the summary there to reflect the same answer that we have on Item 33. Mr. President, forgive me, I.
I'm sorry, Director Farrell, I see project completed for 32 and 33.
I'm sorry?
I, I see project completed for 32.
Yes, the description.
I'm, I'm looking at the, go to the far right column. Work is underway.
I see.
That obviously.
I see what Travis says. There's a column in there. If you look, it's in the middle, and under project status, this is project completed for 32, update employee handbook, and for 33.
So, I think it should say the same in both, both common columns.
Yeah, yeah, no, I see.
You got it? Um, and Item 17, I thought we had agreed that it was premature to get involved with brokers until we're closer to the end of our, I thought the Board had again, had agreed that it was premature to get involved with brokers until about the third year from the end of the, that's typical practice.
If I may.
Please.
I think there was debate on that and left it as an open unsettled matter for staff to explore, so I, I wouldn't say it was settled.
Okay, maybe we can go back and look at the videotape on that conversation.
And either way, again, Mac, you might want to speak, or Pete, you might want to speak to this. It looks like it says that multiple brokers have reached out to them as opposed to vice versa. So, I don't think.
But this is a, I'm reading the first, the second column, which we were charging them to go find brokers.
Right, but we, but I think you're saying that we paused that.
I thought we did.
Right.
Director Mullenix has a different impression.
I, I'm with you on that. I thought we paused it, but what I'm reading here is that they didn't actively go out to look. The people came to that, which is awesome.
So, I, what I wanted clarification, hope to get clarification on is, we don't have this expectation of staff for the immediate future, and maybe, I mean, that, the item number 17 needs to be amended so that when we come to do an evaluation, we don't expect there's something going on here because I thought the consensus at the Board level was, it's premature. We need to wait a couple of more years before we actively engage with brokers.
Peter Mac, did you want to?
I think you're all essentially saying the same thing. We are not out actively soliciting brokerage. I do think Director Mullenix is correct that the, some Board members wanted to continue the dialogue. We are just reporting what's happened. We are not out soliciting brokers at this time.
Yeah, I think what Director Farrell was just asking is that we just update the text here just to reflect that essentially what you're saying is fully reflected here because it doesn't say all of that. Doesn't say that we're, we've paused but. Just so, as Director Farrell said, you know, we're not using that as a way to evaluate any member of staff or the team later on and with any like unfair expectation. Take it off your table.
Do you want us to either eliminate it altogether, which may send a different message, or do you want us just to put something like project paused? Or how can we bridge this gap?
I would suggest project paused.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Thank you. So, Slide 6 says that you have to start the renewal process in 150 days in advance. So, when would you have to start reaching out to brokers?
Mr. President?
Oh, I'm sorry, we'll, we'll let this.
Sorry, Izzy, that's for insurance. That's not for the broker for our office space. Two different, two different topics.
Ah, okay, got it. Okay, sorry, my bad. Thank you.
Did you, okay.
Thank you, Director Farrell, for always being there on top of it.
Director Justkuk.
Per the insurance update, I'd like to make a suggestion to the Board because the question was asked if the Board would like to interview the insurance representatives, and if so, we would need to do that in November and December. I'd like to make a suggestion that the Board not do that separate from the Fiscal Committee. The Fiscal Committee is going to meet with them. The Board members can either attend that Fiscal Committee meetings when those are going to occur, or we could ask the staff to tape those interviews so that Board members, if they can't go to Fiscal, can watch them later. And that way, it doesn't become an agenda item in November and December.
I think we can agree, we can agree to that one. Does that require?
Without objection.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, can, can we get the rest of the Board to give us any objections or none? I see no objection. In fact, I saw a thumb floating across the screen, so I think we're good.
And then my second comment, which could also probably go under the budget, is related to central services facility roof replacement. Believe it's in the 2026 CIP as a replacement item. But on the condition assessment, I didn't see the roof's useful life being super short. And I thought I looked at both buildings, so can you, if you could help clarify?
So, probably three or four months ago, we, we had started having pretty significant leaking issues at the CSF building to the point where there was mold on some ceiling tiles. So, we needed to find an active solution just to have safe workspaces. So, what we did a few month, last month, I think, we installed, and I'll save you the whole story, but when the roof was installed the first time, it wasn't done correctly. So, we installed some insulation and some new drywall that we hope will stop some of the leaking issues. So, we were holding the money for the roof replacement for next year pending, seeing what our interim fix did for us. But I am a little concerned about the working environment for the staff there if this, if the roof continues to leak. So, we're sort of just in a holding pattern right now. But you're right that the useful life and the condition assessment and what we're predicting for next year do not line up, but we, I think we should probably accelerate it if we have the same issue.
Okay, so that's good to know that, that even though the condition assessment reports we found pretty valuable, it doesn't always.
Sometimes, sure.
Paint the picture, the full picture of exactly when something needs to be maintained or replaced. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions for Mr. Cummins and staff? Seeing none, let us move on to the next item, which is Item G, Budget Session Discussion. That's me. So, just to kick that off, I want to thank the entire Board for their participation in the breakout sessions that we had last week. I, at least from my perspective, I think despite some initial hiccups getting started, I think it was a good meeting. We had some solid output. And I also want to thank every, everyone who reviewed the output document ahead of time, and especially Director Justkuk for the feedback that she gave me over the course of the last couple of nights. That found its way into the final document, which staff has in hand. The goal of the breakout sessions was simple, to find ways that the Board can provide feedback to staff to help manage the assessment. And I think we were, we were fairly successful. So, part of our output was a list of motions that the members of the Board are going to make to provide further clarity to staff for Draft 2 of the budget. We did not agree on how we're going to start this, so I'm going to throw it up to anyone who'd like to get started. Director Justkuk.
I would just like to ask to put the document that was circulated to the Board members in the minutes.
Fantastic.
So that it finds its way into the public package.
I think without issue, we will do that. Thank you.
Can I start making motions? And then we can just start debating them?
How about it?
Or if there are, can we do groupings of where there's no issues? And then therefore, this could go quicker, depending on the willingness of my peers?
I think we can just get started.
Okay, I move that the Board approve reducing the proposed staff merit increase from 4% to 3.2 for the 2026, 2027 biannual budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made in second. Comments or discussion? And again, I shouldn't say again, something discussed offline, but I'd like to say here, staff, if you would like to make comments or have questions about anything you hear in here, since you were not part of these meetings, please feel free to ask. We want to make sure that we come out of this meeting with as much clarity as possible.
Thank you. There, there are several we're going to have some questions on and maybe a few that we have some comments on. Don't have any on this. I understand what you're proposing.
Awesome. Okay, any comments from the Board?
Over here, I have a question.
Oh, Director Mullenix.
So, I just, I guess I want to get a reaction to the, the change from 4% to 3.2% from the perspective of staff. And second, secondly, to the, to the Board, or at least to the discussion that we had in our group, I think the number was 3.5, not 3.2. So, I just want to maybe float 3.5 as an alternative. You know, that's not a substitute motion at the moment, but just get a reaction from the Board on, on that.
Me to go first? I, I, I think 3.2 or 3.5 is an appropriate overall number, particularly coupled with some things that I think I see further down the list, you know, additively. As, as a broad concept, I'm more concerned about the combination of a reduction in merit and an addition to attrition. But as a standalone concept, I, I think this is an appropriate overall amount of money, and I think we feel confident as a management team that, that that will help us reward high-performing employees here at the organization. But I do want to talk to you about attrition when that comes up.
Thank you.
Okay. And then you want to float?
Yeah, you know, again, at least my, my recollection, I know that there was a, a range that we had talked about with 3.2 at the low end, 3.5, which was, I think, captured in our notes. So, I just want to float that and see if there was any additional concern or comment from other members of the Board on where we settle at, either 3.2 or 3.5.
Do you want to just make a substitute motion and see how it goes?
Okay, substitute motion to consider 3.5.
Is there a second to replace 3.2 or 3.5 in the original motion?
Second.
Motion's made in seconded. Comments and discussion? All right, hearing none.
Uh, we have.
Oh, I'm sorry, Director Justkuk.
I think as we consider that all the motions tonight, we need to remember that we still have another Board meeting and another draft to, to review. When I look at the merit increase pool every year, I look at kind of the state of the economy and what we're seeing. And I would love in the future, and I've made this comment multiple times, that staff kind of bring us what they're seeing in the surrounding areas for what the projected increase is because this is something that I follow. We're in an unfortunate situation in which the TC local economy is, is having a rough go of it. And across the US, where we've just been seeing merit increase projection surveys decrease from the summer, and they just keep getting, to be honest, worse, the opposite direction that we have of, you know, everyone that works would like to see them go. And so, that 3.2 is what I'm seeing as far as the latest trends from salary surveys, as much as I'd wanted to see something higher, and I'm sure everybody does.
Any further comments on the substitute motion? Okay, seeing and hearing none, all in favor? It's one in favor, anyone else? One against, and abstaining?
I'm against.
Two, two against, and abstentions. One, two, three. Director Lanza?
Abstain.
And four. So, one, two, and four. So, motion fails. So, back to the original motion, moving from 4.0 to 3.2. All in favor? One, two, three, four. Director Lanza, Director Santa, Director Perry.
Yay.
That's six in favor, and then against? And abstaining? Okay, I just read you as a, as four a moment ago, Director Lanza. Are you abstaining?
I'm abstaining, yes.
Okay, so that's five in favor. I believe we've got one against. And Director Perry, were you in abstention as well?
Correct.
Two abstentions, 5, 1, 2. All right, moving on to the next motion.
I move that the Board directs staff to adjust the personal budget to reflect an attrition rate of 4.5 rather than 3.5.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded. Any comments? Director Mullenix.
I guess I'd like staff reaction to, to the motion.
Yeah, I, I have some concerns about this one, and I'd like to just kind of walk you through that. So, the way this mechanically works, we are subtracting budgeted monies from the salary account, which means if we're off, we will be overspending the salary account. And I think inherent in this concept is no one has a crystal ball, but what do we think is a likely amount so that we're not inadvertently collecting too much money? I think it's important that we just kind of talk that through because 4.5% is an assumed salary savings number of $380,000 over the course of the year. That's roughly 4.5% of the company being vacant for an entire year at the median salary. So, typically, positions change over, and so we have 90 or 120-day refill positions, which means we'd be looking at a vacancy rate somewhere between 12 and 18% over the course of the year at the median salary to make the number work, or we wouldn't have enough money to make total payroll. So, in years past, it is true that we have run fairly substantial salary savings. Those were in years that we were minus SLT positions, so you can go back and track that pretty, pretty closely. In years you're minus the CEO, you have a much bigger salary savings than in years that you have a full SLT, which is where we're at right now. In context, the total budget surplus, all $21 million, all expenses, is between $75,000 and $80,000 at the end of the year. That's what we're projecting right now. That's less than the 1% assumed savings money we don't have that you're discussing. So, it's, it, to me, I think, I would ask you to consider, you know, we had suggested 3.5. I think that, I really do believe that's an appropriate number, but I would offer and suggest that you not consider making this any more than four.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none, all in favor?
I am not in favor. Sorry.
Aye.
The stupid thing.
Sorry, the stupid thing is not correct.
Okay, but I think I saw Director Santa is in favor. Yes. Okay, so that's three in favor, against?
Against.
Okay, that's three against. Are you against, Director Perry?
Correct.
Okay, and four against, motion does not carry.
I move that the board direct staff to adjust the personal budget to reflect an attrition rate of 4% rather than 3.5%.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Comments? Director Dushak?
I just want to remind the board, I sent it via email, that the fiscal committee has, there's been discussion at the fiscal committee regarding risk factors when it comes to the budget. What we are putting in essentially at this time is a risk factor. It's a risk that we are willing or not willing to take. It is not saying to the staff that if all the staff members stay and you don't meet this, then you're bad, or that something has gone wrong in the budget. It is a risk factor that helps us determine a reasonable assessment rate to charge the members. Because of the history of meeting this, I'm disappointed that the board didn't pass the last motion, but I would urge the board to at least go to 4%. And next year, when we're sitting in the same place, I want us to look at this more closely, because to me, this is a very easy decision. It does not take any money out of staff's pockets, but it does take money out of members' pockets when we are not taking appropriate risks within our budget. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, one, two, three, four. Five, Director Perry, are you in favor?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So that's five in favor, against? And then abstaining?
Abstain.
Two, so it's 5, 0, 2. Okay, next.
I move that the board approve a one-time employee compensation pool of $140,000 consistent with the board's adopted compensation philosophy, and set the annual merit pool within the market range of 3.2 to 3.5%.
Wait a minute. Didn't we just do?
We had something similar.
That's the last part of that motion is out of order.
It is.
It was just the way it was written. She's just reading it. You just had her remove the merit piece, Izzy.
Okay, subtract after the comma. Can you give me a second for that?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Margaret.
Okay, that's a replacement motion. All in favor?
Mr. President, as I indicated to you earlier, I have a substitute motion, and I want to speak to this motion.
Please.
Thank you. As all of you who were on the board last year when we were presented with the PRM study know, I think the PRM study is junk. I don't think we should be making decisions based on the PRM study. This is a motion based on the PRM study. My understanding is that we have 16, and somebody can correct me, I hope someone will, that we have 16 employees that are making less than $25 an hour. Everything I read says that a living, minimum living wage in the Washington metropolitan area is $25 an hour or about $50,000, $50,200 a year. And I think it is much more important for the morale of our employees, especially those who are at the bottom of the compensation scale, that when you work for Reston Association, especially given our founding and the purpose of Reston, that no one should be working for Reston full-time and not be making a living wage. So my substitute motion is that the board approve a number that, and I'll look for the CFO to give me that number, to establish that all employees of Reston Association be paid not less than $25 an hour.
Okay, we've got.
That's full-time employees, let me be clear.
Further comment? Director, I'm sorry, Mr. Cummins?
So President Johnson, Director Farrell, Director Flashman asked us that question about a week and a half ago, so we actually calculated the number. It's about $32,000 in total for all of the, and I apologize, I don't recall the exact number of employees under $25 an hour. But if the will of the board was to add that to the current motion, it'd be about $32,000 extra.
It's a substitute motion, Mr. President, not an amendment.
Director Molnax?
With the motion, I know that we're speaking on the substitute motion.
We need a second first.
Okay.
Because we're still talking about the first motion.
We have to do that first.
We're actually still talking about the first motion, so is there a second for the substitute motion?
Without a second, it dies, just as I'm.
And that's why I'm asking, is there a second?
We're asking for a second, Director Perry. Thank you.
I hear no second. Okay, moving back to the original motion. Director Molnax, please continue.
Okay, I think the point from Director Farrell is well-made and something for staff to consider. With the given pool that we're talking about here in this motion, do you think both goals can be accomplished?
No, not meeting the expectations of some of our protected conversations.
We would need to add the 32K to this in order to.
Accomplish all the objectives that you have previously discussed using this pool of money for. Okay.
Director Dushak?
I would also hazard to say that there is probably a pay grade range that does not meet the minimum of what Director Farrell's commenting on. So it would be.
Multiple issues.
There would be multiple issues with the integrity of the pay scales. That would also need to be fixed, in addition to money to fix that. I would like to see this motion deferred, because the compensation philosophy changes are actually in the personnel policy update, which is not until after this. So we have not really adopted the compensation philosophy that matches this plan.
Is that a motion to defer?
I can do a substitute motion to defer.
No, no, no.
No, you just, all you have to do is do a motion to defer.
Okay, then I'll do a motion to defer.
Do you have the specific time? Forgive me, Mr. President.
No, it's okay. It can be milestone-based, so if we do it, you know, after.
After the adoption of the compensation philosophy, is that okay?
After the adoption of the personnel manual? Because that's where the compensation philosophy is reflected.
Sure, that sounds good.
Prelimarian, is this all square with you? Awesome. Okay.
Second that?
Made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
I have a question.
Director Perry?
Thank you. Based on the motion to defer until the HR manual is approved, did I get that correct, Director Dushak?
Yes.
I just want to point out to the rest of my board members, should that HR manual not be approved before this budget cycle is over, we will not have met the issue at hand. Just throwing that out there.
Can I ask a question?
Who's asking who a question?
Izzy to Jennifer?
Please. Director Dushak?
Do, how significant of an impact will the discussion later on change the amount that we're discussing? Is it a big delta or a small delta?
I don't think.
I would not, I would not know that, because the compensation philosophy in the personnel policy manual says that the association wants to move people to the midpoint within five years of their, five years of service. And so I actually do not believe that 140,000 gets us to those statistics. I believe that number was the $350,000 number, if I'm not mistaken, or 450?
About 430,000, as I recall.
Is, if we approve the compensation philosophy, it would be 430,000 per month.
So a substantial delta.
That, if I may continue the discussion, that was assuming it was done all at once in one year, not spreading it out over the course of several years, which is, I think, staff's.
I asked that question, he said no.
Right. I just don't think that we have.
Through the merit pool.
Right, and I asked that question, and the answer was no. It was not intended to implement option two and three over the next several years, that this was going to be a one-time bump.
I believe we have staff here, and they can correct or whatever, so please.
I'll just offer, I think you're both correct. So the PRM study last year contemplated that we were starting to fall behind from a market competitive standpoint, just in general. And so when we had the discussion most recently, I showed you all a couple of options. Our intent was to try to make some adjustments in the short term, meaning a one-time adjustment, which you're discussing right now as a budget amendment, coupled with ongoing merit increases to help catch up for good performance over time. I will also just offer, when we get to the compensation philosophy discussion, it does not set in rigid requirements, you know, in the way that sort of was starting to get talked about here. We talk a lot about funding availability and other things. So there are lots of factors that drive the ability to move through ranges.
If I may speak on one final. I think with the first motion where we changed the merit pool down did reflect some element of ensuring that we carried through with the motion at hand, or I should say the 140,000 that we have here. So I would, if there's a risk that we wouldn't get to that business tonight, I would say let's continue with, and pass the motion at hand.
All right. I think that wraps up discussion for this.
Can I have one more?
Director Dushak?
Just letting you guys know, I am not opposed to changing the date or changing the factor of which this gets deferred. That seemed to be a suggestion at the table at the time. I have no objection to making sure that we finish this before the budget process is over. But I do, I do think that we should defer it in some manner. If this motion doesn't pass, I would ask a fellow board member to pick a different date.
Can we ask unanimous consent to amend the pending motion to provide that it's deferred to a date not later than the adoption of the assessment amount?
Any concerns with that? I'm sorry?
When would that be?
Typically, it would be the first meeting in November.
I don't think we should delay this decision that long.
Well, Mr. President, I have gotten to page 31 on the employment manual. I don't know that anybody has read the entirety of the employment manual. I'm not prepared to act on it tonight. I would be surprised if anybody was. So I would, and because the compensation philosophy is in this employee manual, I think we need to be careful with how we go forward. $140,000 is, what is that, $7 on the assessment? We've made questions, we've made decisions that have even a larger dollar swing the night we have adopted the budget. So I'm not going to vote on this manual tonight. I don't know if anybody else is. And this 140 is driven by what we say in our manual. So that's why I'm asking unanimous consent to kick it to the note, and not later than, we also can bring it up earlier, not later than the adoption of the budget.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Do we have any further discussion on this?
I raised my hand really quickly. Is the 140,000 staff recommended memo? Or is this a number that came from one of the subgroups?
Staff.
Correction, it's a number that came from one of the subgroups.
That's the number in the memo.
That refers back to the memo.
Not completely.
Mac, if you'd like to step in, go ahead.
I did not participate in the subgroups.
No.
We did not propose $140,000. In the memo, which was confidential, there were different options, none of which was 140.
Fair enough, so it came from the subgroup.
It was a board subgroup recommendation.
What was the number in the memo? I thought it was 140.
Okay, good.
If he's saying 106, you're saying 1/3?
I got what I need, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, no further discussion, all in favor of the motion?
Motion's to defer.
No, the motion to defer, say aye. One, two, in favor? And against?
I think, do I have a vote in favor or against?
I don't know.
Favor.
You're in favor, okay, to defer. Okay, so that's three in favor. Against?
Against.
One, two, three, three against, and an abstention.
Izzy abstains.
One abstention, the motion does not carry. Okay. Next motion, please.
Wait a minute.
Wait, we have to go back to the original motion.
That's right, we defer, so now we have to act on the actual motion.
Main motion.
So the main motion, to approve a one-time employee compensation pool of 140K consistent with the board's adopted compensation philosophy, period. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four in favor?
Aye.
Five in favor, against? One against, and abstention.
I'm against.
That's five, two.
So just to be clear, our CEO now has to use the other compensation philosophy to enact that 140,000, not the one he's proposed. I just want to make that clear for the record, which was, I don't think the board's.
Mr. Cummins?
I believe.
I believe this one-time market adjustment is consistent with either of those things.
Okay. All right, moving on to the next motion.
I move that the board reduce the IT modernization budget to $30,000 total, limited to essential maintenance and cybersecurity requirements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, discussion?
Did Izzy say 30,000?
She did.
30,000 total, as it was sent over me.
It was updated in the chart to 70.
It was?
You know, you're right.
Yeah, there are different.
The chart does say seven, yeah, the chart says 70. This is my bad.
No, the chart says reduce to 30, with a 70,000 saving.
That's.
Says minus seventy.
That's the financial effect, there's the reduction is minus thirty, reduce to thirty.
You can't have a financial effect of seventy if you're reducing something.
The math is wrong there.
Yeah.
I don't disagree.
This isn't possible.
But the motion that she read is correct, reduce to thirty, that's what's in the.
Yeah, she's reading, it just, I'm just saying it didn't get updated at the below motion.
So we're good, so the motion that she's reading about thirty thousand is correct.
That reflects the board's subgroups output, I think.
Right.
Yep.
That also reflects, well, we're not debating the motion, so I'll just stop. All right, was there a second, Matt, Ramon, Lanza?
Lanza.
Yeah, it was made and seconded.
Okay, the thirty thousand, I also believe, was staff recommendation from the staff memo, is that correct?
Yes.
So just some clarifications on this, just because the eighty and the seventy and the thirty were not lighting up for us. So in our memo from two meetings ago, we recommended a reduction of thirty thousand in the IT professional and technical support, and we recommended the twenty-five thousand dollar reduction for the seasonal IT person that we proposed. Were there additional items that the board discussed? I just want to make sure that we get this right. We're not pushing back, I just want to make sure we get this right in the next round of budget.
I don't think so.
Okay, so as long as this reflects a thirty thousand dollar total, because we don't, I don't think we have a budget line that says IT modernization. So I want to, I just want to make sure we get this right, that's all. So if there's any more details, happy to take those notes down.
Director Dreschek. I'm sorry, go, Director Santa.
Just to be clear, this is a reflection of staff identifying that we have current capabilities on hand to do member engagement upgrades that do not require an extra thirty thousand, is that correct?
So this, this could also mean we had software listed in that table as well, so we may not just be talking about the IT budget, we're talking about software proposals as well. That would, that would line up a little bit easier, okay, got it, okay.
Director Perry?
Director Perry, are you asking a question, or are you still?
Asking question.
Okay, please.
This is to staff. With this reduction, does that then delay the continued movement towards single sign-on that our membership has been requesting for a while?
Two, two answers for you, Director Perry. The first one is, so the IT seasonal, the reason we proposed the IT seasonal was to help take some lift off of our two full-time IT staff. In the past, we've tried to propose a director of IT, and that has not gone well for us in multiple recruitment, so we tried to go the other direction, to just try to take some day-to-day work off of Zane and Damian's desks. The reason it relates to single sign-on is those are the two staff that would be working on that effort. In the, from the software perspective, that would, is not really involved in the single sign-on conversation. So on the staff side, yes, but not on the software side.
Thank you.
Director Dreschek.
My understanding of the intent or rationale of the subgroups that met was that we would not embark on implementing new software until we had the final report from the staff and a plan on how we're moving to an SSO-type environment, which we are expecting in quarter one of next year. So, in getting to seventy thousand, what I saw in the budget was fifteen thousand for Civic Plus three, three-one-one software, Civic Plus C Click Fix for twenty-five, Communications Department Member Engagement Software of thirteen thousand, HR Software for seventeen thousand, which totals seventy thousand. So it did not speak to the IT summer, or I don't know if it's the summer, but seasonal staff at all. It only spoke to software, new software that was in the budget for twenty twenty-six.
So just for my clarity now, you're, you would have gone for seventy K rather than thirty K, correct?
Based on what I thought the intentions of the subgroups were, was to not move forward with new software.
Okay.
So I would do a substitute motion to reduce the, the technology applicable line items in the budget for Civic Plus three eleven, Civic Plus C Click Fix, Communications Member Engagement Software, and HR Software in the amount of seventy thousand dollars. I would ask for a second.
I will second that, just so I can then follow up with a question to staff and just hear staff's reaction to, to those four specific line items and impact to twenty twenty-six plans.
So the, just to hit them all quickly, the Civic Plus three-one-one, I believe we proposed. It's just an enhanced version of what we're currently doing online. So we launched an online maintenance request form earlier this year, we've had a hundred and fifty requests to date, which is great. The Civic Plus three-one-one system just integrates with the website, so it's just an upgraded version, but it certainly doesn't change our operations. On the, the other side, the Civic, the other Civic Plus, that's not an issue, it's just another step towards single sign-on, but it doesn't inhibit our ability to come with a plan in Q one. The communication software was an attempt to try to increase our engagement efforts. So, for those that have been coming out to our, you know, our parks and our playgrounds and other things to do engagement this summer, that's just a better online platform for those types of efforts. From the HR perspective, I know that our new HR manager is, is super interested in having some different managerial software. But just from an operations perspective, it doesn't inhibit us from doing our work, these are enhancements.
Okay. Further discussion? This is for the substitute motion for seventy K, all in favor? One, two, three?
Aye.
Four and, five in favor, against? And abstaining?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Five, zero, two. So that line item is changed to reduced to seventy K. And the financial effect is two. Next motion, please.
Mr. President, before we go down that, the road of the next motion, I believe it's out of order. And I believe it's out of order for two reasons. One, it is, intrudes upon the CEO's prerogatives as to how to staff various departments, and that's not for the board to do. And A, subtract that, and B, it's not a budget item, there's no dollars attached here. It's aspirational, feel-good, something, I don't know what. And I don't know what starvation, I don't know what, what is hoped to be achieved. I, I don't think it's proper before the body, for those two reasons.
Hasn't been read yet.
Sir? So I think all we have to do is just not read it.
That's why, that's why I raised it before it was read.
That's, all, all we have to do is choose not to read it. So, moving on to the next one that someone wants to read.
I move that the board direct staff reevaluate all inflationary assumptions within the biannual budget and focus reductions where projected increases exceed the regional inflation rate.
Is there a second? I'm hearing no second on that one, so we're going to move, move on, thank you.
I just have a clarifying question. So the motion is to evaluate that, do you want us to come back with a report on those things? Or is there an expectation to adjust the budget accordingly?
We just decided not to do it.
Oh, I'm sorry. My, my, sorry.
I move that the board authorize staff to explore areas where moderate budget risk may be acceptable, including tree maintenance, pump inventory, and vehicle replacement cycles, and report back with options for controlled cost reduction.
Is there a second on this one?
Isn't this kind of the same as two, which we said we just wouldn't do?
Yeah.
I mean, if we follow the same logic here.
I would say that you're not wrong. So, again, all we have to do is not second it. I don't hear a second, moving on.
I move that the board direct staff to reevaluate member fee schedules for programs and amenities where fees have remained static, adjusting those fees upward in line with inflation.
There isn't a second, moving on.
Nobody wants to raise rates on members, I like it, because I was going to vote against this. I move that the board formally request additional financial contributions from Friends of Reston to offset programs' costs, targeting a contribution increase of approximately ninety-five thousand dollars total, or the equivalent of three dollars per household equivalent.
Is there a second for this?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, is, is there discussion? Director Perry?
I, I just want to clarify, because the wording on this motion is sketchy. Is the contribution increase up to ninety-five thousand total? Or is it ninety-five thousand above and beyond what they already give? Because technically, the fact that it reads target, targeting a contribution increase means ninety-five thousand above what they currently give. So I would like clarification on what is actually meant.
I'm reading this as ninety-five above what they currently provide.
And that is what was meant.
Director Cummings, I'm sorry, Mr. Cummings?
Not a director, just some clarifying questions, and maybe just some comments, since a lot of you don't go to the Friends of Reston board meetings unless you've been the, the board president here. So, ninety-five thousand dollars is like, I think about four and a half dollars per RA equivalent household. So I'm, I understood this to be ninety-five thousand additional dollars, but unearmarked. I understand the motion to be a request, meaning what we would like to get out tonight, if there's specific direction to adjust the budget. If it's a request, we would then theoretically go to the Friends board meeting, talk to them, and come back and report. And then the board would, I think, decide what to do, based on that interaction. So just clarify when you, what this means, should, should the motion pass. And then lastly, just to give you a sense, Friends of Reston does not currently have a revenue stream that is anywhere near the total of ninety-five plus what they currently spend in other program areas. There has been plenty of discussion in the past about asking Friends to spend additional dollars, but in scale, just to give you an idea, the, the total of what we currently have budgeted for revenue, and that shows up in other places, that's about forty-something thousand, so plus ninety-five thousand's about a hundred and thirty-five, hundred and forty thousand dollars. They've got about three hundred thousand dollars total, and they generate maybe seventy, eighty thousand a year currently. Things like the five K that we all just went out to. So what we'd be asking them to do is, is dip into the piggy bank that they have.
Okay, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Three in favor, against? One, and abstaining?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Okay, and two abstaining, so? I'm sorry?
It fails.
It fails, okay.
Three, one, three.
That's right, there was one, okay, thank you.
I move that the board limit Friends of Reston funded projects to core maintenance items, including ADA trail improvements of forty-eight, forty-nine thousand dollars, fire ring replacement of six thousand five hundred, gutter replacement of ten thousand dollars, and an HVAC replacement of nineteen thousand dollars, and defer all non-essential and enhancement projects pending further board review.
Is there a second for them? All right, neither seen nor heard, no, here one. Let's move on to the next, thank you.
I move that the board defer the Hook Road bathrooms project to fiscal year 2027, removing the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar allocation from the 2026, 2027 biannual budget, yielding an estimate of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in reduction.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded.
Question?
Comments, Director Farrell?
I'm confused by the wording that says, removing the two fifty allocation from twenty-six, twenty-seven, when it, the earlier part is moving the project to fiscal year 2027. So you wouldn't be removing, what, you wouldn't be removing two fifty from fiscal year 2027? What, the idea is to push this back one year, but we say from the 2026, 2027 biannual budget.
Was a second, did someone second the motion?
It was, it was a second.
I waited.
Can I help explain?
Please.
Okay, I think there's some confusion. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the bathroom, phase two Hook Road is in 2026, not 2027, because we haven't seen any budget numbers for 2027 yet. And two, my understanding in March was that there were, there was going to be leftover money from Hook Road Phase One. And at the time, the number was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred or six hundred. So when I was going through this, I wrote notes that in addition to the two hundred and fifty thousand of not funding for 2026 Phase Two, is that the board might ha, might consider whether it takes the leftover Phase One money and also defunds that if we're finished Phase One by the end of the year. But I didn't see it in the carryover report from our CFO, so maybe someone and staff can help clarify that for us.
Please.
Sure, so this was another one that we just had a couple of questions on, so thank you for help, thank you for clarifying. So the way I read this is, we're going to push the Hook Road bathroom to the year 2027. The one hundred and thirty-eight estimated leftover from what we're currently doing at Hook Road, we had anticipated using to shop the bathroom project in a different way for 2027? So I, I appreciate that we may want to just take what's left and, you know, apply that to this year's assessment, I appreciate that. But I think we would be best served to try to use that to fund the restroom in twenty-seven. The other, the other issue is that we're just not done out there yet. So, for example, if we find Jimmy Hoffa out there, there might be some money we have to use to.
We might make money.
Right. So, I, I totally understand the intent, but I think, I think we might be best served applying that to the two fifty to try to shop the bathroom for twenty-seven.
Can, can I ask the maker of the motion, can we ask staff to come back with language that more carefully reflects the intention here? I think the wording here is confusing, it's, at least, it confuses this director. And, and I think that there's better language we can come back with to accomplish that end. But I'm, I'm asking that of the maker of the motion and the second. Because I, I think the way this is worded, we might not be, it might be interpreted as the saying, we're not going to do the bathrooms until 2028. And I don't think that's anybody's intention.
I think there's maybe two separate motions here, and they just need to be unpacked. I think there's consensus among the board, but we can vote on it to, to defer the bathroom project to twenty-seven. I think there's general consensus there. So I would propose a substitute motion of the same.
Go for it.
This is, I think it's been made.
Can you just clarify exactly, since we're confused?
Substitute motion as, I move that the board defer the Hook Road bathroom project to fiscal year 2027, removing the two hundred and fifty thousand allocation from the twenty-six, twenty-seven biannual budget.
That's, that's the problem.
Oh, subtract that part, from the twenty-six budget.
All right, let's be clear, just for, for everybody's, for everyone's sake, you.
All right, I move that the board defer the Hook Road bathroom project to fiscal year 2027. Removing, period, okay, there we go, period.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, motion, motion is made and seconded.
Got to have a long one.
Discussion? Director Santa?
I second it.
Oh, there were multiple seconds, I believe, sorry. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous of all, oh wait, no, Director Lanza?
Aye.
It is unanimous of all in attendance, thank you very much.
I move that the board reduce the repair replace fund contribution by a hundred thousand dollars in the 2026, 2027 budget, adjusting timing for non-critical budgets.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Motion's made and seconded.
Ask for a staff, staff reaction to it.
I was just maybe looking for a little clarification, I don't know if Pete knows, but are we just talking about reducing the contribution by a hundred K? Are we looking to move some pred- Are we looking to move some projects out, the total a hundred K, so as adjusting timing for non-critical projects is is it also finding a hundred K worth of projects or just reducing the, you know, contribution?
That, that, yeah, because it's, how does this relate to motion? This is number six. Mr. President? I I I'm just going to speak against this motion.
Please.
Um, we had a working group. I served on it. You were there. Director Molyneux was there. And we went over the capital improvement plan pretty rigorously for the next ten years. Um, this motion doesn't tell me what projects that the working group says should be said should be brought forward and 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 acted on. Which ones are we going to not act on that the working group recommended to this board should go forward? Um, this and a hundred thousand dollars seems to be a very arbitrary number. Um, I I can't support uh a a vaguely worded motion and no, no criticism of the person who made the motion that just facilitating our deliberations site. But a vaguely worded motion that basically says, we don't like what the working group did. Um, a- and what the staff is recommending without identifying what projects, capital projects, we don't want going forward next year. I I I don't think that's how we should be doing business. If we have a working group going over the capital plan with a fine-tooth comb, because I sat through those and so did three of my colleagues here. I I i- if someone thinks we did a bad job, tell us what exact projects they don't think are crit- non-critical. Because we were pretty careful to include projects that needed to be done in order to keep our projects, in order to keep our facilities um in good shape for our membership. So I can't support this motion.
Director Molyneux?
Um, speaking neither for nor against the motion, I think it is simply a uh trying to reflect uh asking staff to to reprioritize in order to save on the assessment. I think it is simply at that level that this discussion was had. Um, again, speaking neither for nor against. Uh, Pete?
Thank you. Just a just a quick reminder, um, in the memo we provided for the September twenty-eighth meeting, we recommended an opportunity to save fourteen dollars on the assessment by reducing the contribution to the CIP from three-point-one-five to two-point-eight-five. We didn't have that conversation in the uh at the end of September, but we are prepared to act on that if the board is interested in that conversation. So we, I just want to remind everyone that we've already recommended a fourteen-dollar savings that changes the contribution to the CIP but does not change the project listing. Because that was the conversation we've had throughout the year was get to a place where the contribution stays the same, but the contribution could be a little bit more or less than the actual project amount because we have unassigned funds in the bank. So I just wanted to remind everyone that that we did make that recommendation and we are ready to implement that if the board is interested.
Awesome. A- and Mr. President, if I might, that's why I think this motion should not go forward. We've worked with the staff. The staff has come back to us carefully and come up with a number that keeps our facilities in good shape and saves, how much on them?
It was fourteen dollars on the assessment.
Fourteen dollars on the assessment. This saves four dollars on the assessment.
Do you want to introduce a substantive motion to follow?
Well, I don't, I, Mr. President, I don't need to in that when we adopt the CIP, which we will as part of the budget process, later this month, early next month, that's when we do it. So I I don't, I I think this motion is superfluous. And I would hope that we vote it down.
Well, it has been made, seconded, and we have had sufficient discussion. So all in favor? I see none. Against?
Against.
I like the thumbs down. Anyone else?
Against.
One, two, one, two, three, four, five. Director Perry, just checking?
Abstain.
Okay, so we've got uh six, one, six, zero, one.
I move that the board reduce the hydrola control program allocation by twenty-five thousand dollars reflecting anticipating anticipated cost sharing with Fairfax County. I thought it was a state, but doesn't matter.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion.
Uh, Mr. President?
Please.
Just to confirm, this would be switching towards the grass carp option. Is that correct?
That is correct. We are moving towards a carp control option.
Awesome. That is exciting to hear and I look forward to it.
I think you just wanted to get carp control option on the record. Director Jess check.
Um, I will just remind the board that um five years ago, might have been six, we embarked on a two-year uh add more carp to the lakes solution. And the hydrola came and the board ended up having to spend multiple meetings with members because they were so frustrated. Um, so I applaud adding the carp. I think the carp certainly will help. Um, I think we are in a situation in which um the hydrola is already out of control. And so we missed the window for the carp to be the most effective option and we have moved into needing to treat the hydrola. Um, and it's probably something we need to do like every three years or on some rotation so it doesn't come back. So I don't support um getting rid of the the hydrola option in the budget. Uh, mostly because I don't, I don't want to see the wrath of members next summer when the hydrola comes back.
Mr. Loosk?
So I will, I'll try to keep my hydrola education campaign to a very short, couple sentences here, but I have learned all about hydrola in the last few months. So here's, here's, and I appreciate Director Jess Chuck's comments because I think she's right in a few cases, so there was a carp effort a few years ago. There has been, um, I would say a reduced maybe concentration on keeping the carp alive in the lake. So the carp have gone away. So it's a two-phased approach. We will add chemicals to the lake to get rid of the hydrola as well. That's something we can do within the budget we have now. The reason we didn't add chemicals over the summer is because if you kill the hydrola too quickly, it then causes an algae problem. So you're getting rid of one problem to cause a different problem. So I've been talking with Ben Rhodes and Mike Reynolds about this ad nauseam. I know more about hydrola than I ever thought I would, but I think using the chemicals in the winter time will help avoid the algae issue and then the carp is a long-term solution. This was to bring in a mechanical issue, so picture something that looks like a Ferris wheel that comes into the lake and just pulls it all out. That's what this solution proposed. I believe with the chemical treatment and the fish treatment that we do have a plan in place. But I do understand, uh, Director Jess Chuck's comments that we've, we've let it go for the summer. We we chose to do that. Um, but that's just some background on where we are.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask them a follow-up question? So getting rid of twenty-five thousand dollars from the budget will allow for a carp solution and a winter slash spring chemical treatment solution to remain in the budget.
That's correct.
I think that's where everyone was confused. So I'm okay. Thank you.
Cool. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
One, two, three, four.
Aye.
Aye.
I think it's unanimous. Okay.
I move that the board remove all playground projects from the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven biannual budget until project scopes and cost estimates are finalized.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Discussion, please.
Mr. President?
Mr. Farrell. Director Farrell?
Um, my understanding is that we have already undertaken some input, public input on s- at least three, two, three, four uh playgrounds. So we have members who use those four playgrounds who believe we're moving forward. Um, I I don't think we should be stopping those projects next year. Uh, and so I can't support this motion because we have made an implied promise to the people who live near those four playgrounds that we're going to fix those playgrounds or upgrade those playgrounds. And in one case, it's um, the playground was lost because of a casualty. And so I I I can't vote for this because our members, especially the members of of young children, are relying on us to upgrade those four playgrounds.
So just at an absolute minimum, when the board sees the second draft CIP in a next week at some point, we we have added funding to the second draft to replace the old trail totlot that was crushed by a tree earlier this summer. So we have some insurance money that came in from that. We were going to add some funding to replace that totlot because right now there's nothing there. The community feedback came back and said they do want a playground there in the affirmative, so we were planning to do that. In the CIP for twenty twenty-six, we had added some supplemental funding to projects that were also funded in twenty twenty-five. What we're finding is that playground equipment is just becoming more expensive and what we had done previously for funding is just not sufficient. So we had proposed some additional funding to the playgrounds that Director Farrell was referencing uh to get those projects done for next year. I have a different thought that we have not discussed as a team here, which is like we're doing with trails, like we're doing with culverts, like we're doing with other things, we could also have a playgrounds line every year that doesn't necessarily identify specific playgrounds, but would allow us to replace equipment probably in a much more efficient manner than we're doing now. I'm not sure we're prepared for that for twenty twenty-six, so I don't think we need to talk about it any further than that. It's an idea for later. If we were to punt these to twenty twenty-seven, I don't think we have any heartburn other than that we have been out saying this work is coming. So it'll just require some additional comms on our part. Um, but if we had to move it, I don't think staff are going to push back.
Director Jess check.
But I just want to clarify, besides the playground that we have the insurance issue that is going to come in CIP two, we have already funded before twenty twenty-six budget, the playgrounds that you have been getting member feedback on. I believe there are three, Sanibel.
Let me, sure, so I have, let me just pull this up if you can give me a second.
So I wanted, and while you're doing that, I just want to clarify that the motion, as I read it, um, says that we're defunding playgrounds that we have not collected feedback on. So ones that are were slated for twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven, but not the ones that are already funded as part of twenty-five, twenty-four. That's, that's the wording, right?
Let's let's check in with Director Santa. I believe this one came from her. Director Santa, could you give us some clarity here?
Uh, Jennifer is correct. That is the intent of the motion. So if it needs to get amended, it should be amended. But we are falling behind on replacing playgrounds and I'll stop there in case Pete disagrees with that statement, so we can debate it. Seeing none, I do believe that we do not have an accurate plan to the membership to collect money for playgrounds that go beyond a totlot. What Prak has said is they should be uh upgraded and the upgrades should reflect that this goes to an age group beyond eight years old. These totlots serve a very specific younger group and Prak has said they should serve multiple age groups. And for that reason, the money that is being suggested is inadequate. And we will see ourselves having conversations where staff will ask for more funding every time. So we're just not simply ready. So the the membership, we have to be honest with the membership. We're not there yet, and for that reason, we shouldn't be collecting the money.
Director Perry?
Uh, I think in in general, my initial question has been answered. Um, I I do think that the language here is not detailed enough. Um, because based on how I certainly read this was that all playground projects, including those that have been in process, for example, um, you know, I I will be forthcoming, the one in my neighborhood, the um old trail one that was killed by the tree. It it I'm I'm not against Director Santa, Director Santa's vision for this motion, but I do do not think this motion adequate adequately reflects that.
That's fair. So let's just change it on the spot. Um, Tony, can you help me here? And Pete, do you, is there any playground that you have a discrepancy with?
I I think that, so I I appreciate Director Santa where you're going with the comments. The the two issues that we're going to run into are if we continue to defer, we're going to end up needing to do six or seven of these in one year, and I I can tell you with certainty, I cannot do that. I I think it would be wise because for if for everyone who's memorized their CIP, the Colts Brook and Sanibel totlots were funded in twenty-five. We found that that funding was inadequate. We proposed funding to right-size those projects for twenty twenty-six. That's what you're seeing in your CIP. I think if we were to fund Colts Brook, Sanibel and Old Trail to to fix the issue that we had this summer, we can then look at a different plan moving into twenty twenty-seven. Um, I just, I would hate to see us continue to not do these because we're going to end up with a backlog and we'll never catch up.
Is it, do you have any heartburn with removing twenty twenty-seven?
I I don't. The other, the other comment that I think is worth making is does this mean that we would then reduce the contribution to the CIP? Because the point of the CIP work was to have a consistent contribution. So even if we remove the projects, the contribution to the CIP should stay the same. So I want to, I want to make sure that even if we're removing them, we're not changing the CIP contribution. We might just be saying we're not going to do them in that year.
So it has no effect on the budget?
Say that again.
So it'll have no effect on the budget?
Correct.
Director Farrell, I believe you were waiting to say something.
I I I, as I understood it, and I I invite, um, I see, Chief Operating Officer to correct me. As I understand it, the money that we had previously a- allocated for these four uh playgrounds turns out to be inadequate to complete the work that the membership who live near these playgrounds are asking us to complete. And so we need to have some funds in twenty twenty-six in order to finish the work we impliedly promised to those neighborhoods. And so I I I hear what Prak is saying um through its liaison that and and I and I get their aspiration. Um, I I I am very concerned that while we're waiting for that aspiration to become more tangible, um, we're going to fall further behind in upgrading our playground equipment. And as the father of grandfather of three young people, I can tell you that our playgrounds are in need of upgrading the equipment. Um, the, especially the wooden equipment is splintering and causing uh discomfort to toddlers and the like. I hear what Prak is saying. I'd like to have Prak come back to us with some um dollar numbers on what they are envisioning. But for now, I I think it's important that we leave the playground funding in the CIP the way it is because I don't want to have to have an enlarged contribution to the CIP um to uh catch up with the work that hasn't been done for an extended period of time. So I'd ask the board to vote against this motion.
All right, uh, Director Santa?
Can I amend my motion?
Please. Well, you can give us a substitute motion. Or we can amend, no, we can amend it without with uh with unanimous consent. Thank you.
Thank you. I move that the board remove playground projects for the twenty twenty-seven fiscal year. Period.
Okay, I see no issue with that around the room. Director Jess check and Director Farrell have both have issues.
I object.
I don't think she was asking, I think she was just asking to change her motion. She wasn't asking to that we.
That still requires.
Fair enough.
Unanimous consent to her motion.
No, fair enough. If you object, you object.
I object.
Okay. Okay, we have an objection. So is there?
I have a question.
Is there a second to then for your motion? I see no second either. So we're back to the original motion. And Director Jess check, you have um comments?
Yeah, I'm still confused because we have carryover money for Purple Beach. It says we have twenty-five thousand. But we're not asking for Purple Beach to be funded in full until twenty twenty-seven.
Right.
But with Sanibel, we have thirty-three and we're asking for seventy for twenty twenty-six.
Right.
And Colts Brook, we have 64 and change and we're asking for 50 in 2026.
Correct.
But Hunting Horn, we have 75 and we're asking for 35 in 2027.
Correct.
So it seems like when you're going through the CIP and thinking of tot lots, we, it's like we're spreading out money over two years to fund tot lots that have already been funded partially. So I guess I, I feel like I would be in favor more of completing the tot lots that we've already started funding than funding new tot lots for 2026 and 2027, where like Lake Newport is not on the carryover list and we're asking for 90,000.
Right.
So I would maybe ask the board to consider defunding or taking not, taking out of the capital budget for 2026 and 2027, the tot lots for Lake Newport in the amount of 90,000 for 2026. Lake Anne Park tot lot replacement of 95,000 in 2027. And that, though, I would, I would propose taking out those two and would ask for a second to allow, I need a second first before I can explain.
Second.
Motion's made. Second question.
So my explanation is it seems that that would be getting us to a place where we are completing everything that we feel like we have already started a commitment and a community process for, while allowing us to defer, um, to reorganize our thoughts on the future of playgrounds for, for Ruston by not taking on new tot lot replacements at this time.
Mr. President, Mr. President, I, I can't support that motion because there's nothing in it that says what year do we then go back to these playgrounds? And so the problem that Mr. Lusk has pointed out will still be there, that we're pushing them out indefinitely or we're never doing them. I'm not sure which it is. And when do we come back and do something while we're waiting for Pratt to make concrete their aspirations that are incoherent?
Director, I'm sorry, Director Molnitz.
I see, is he was first.
Director Santa?
Uh, thank you, Jennifer. Uh, that is a very responsible approach and I applaud and I support what you have said. I would also ask this body to realize that there's, we're, we're doing two things that are not in sync, which is we still have a master practice, uh, master parks and rec plan that Peter's supposed to bring us forward. There have been comments that have, I have heard, and we have not had the discussion, but I'm bringing forward the comments, which is, do we need all these playgrounds? Oh, I understand. Uh, it has been raised. We can debate it later. So all I'm saying is I agree with Mr. Farrell and Margaret. Let's get the ones that we have promised, but the other ones we should not be funding because there has been a discussion within the community. And when I was Prak liaison, to correct the record, Margaret's part, Prak liaison now, we have talked about, what if we had a destination playground? So as opposed to having 55 playgrounds, what if we had one awesome playground? So I, I think we need to be measured and I think what Jennifer has highlighted is responsible and has common sense behind it.
I'm sorry.
And Peter, if, if you want to refute anything I said, please do.
I, I'm no, I have no reason to refute your comments, Director Santa. I think funding the, the playgrounds that we've discussed with the community is the right approach. And if we bundle them for a vendor, we will, we will be able to get savings from doing four projects with one vendor.
That's right.
So I, I think this is a responsible approach.
Director Molnitz and then Director Dreschek.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna kind of make that same comment. I, I heard that there's a, by taking this defunding action on these two, now it allows us to make better decision in the future bundling things together. So I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Director Dreschek.
I move to amend the previous motion to add um, that both Lake Anne and Lake Newport would be moved to the 2028 capital budget, which does not get you to six, get you to five, but at that point, oh, I need a second. Sorry, I'm talking.
Now, you can, if you're finishing your motion.
No, I, the motion is just to move those two to 2028.
Okay, so the second, we can continue the discussion.
Okay.
Please.
So the reason I would move them is twofold. One is it's not six and Peter said he couldn't do six. Maybe he can do five. Um, and two, by that time, I think the, the staff, the board, the community will have a better sense of putting in these tot lots or doing a destination playground. And because 2028 already has $510,000 in it, it would probably get us a reasonable start to being able to do a destination program if, if that's the direction that, that we go. Plus another 90 and 95. So that's what? Six, 710,000 or $700,000? That keeps them in the CIP, but it also puts us in a position to be able to do some future planning.
Director Farrell.
A question for the maker of the motion. Were those the only two playgrounds you were taking out of 27 and?
Yes, just those two, Lake Newport in 2026 for 90 and Lake Anne Park in 2027 for 95 because they have no.
So there's three playgrounds.
There's two. Lake Newport of 90,000 in 2026 and Lake Anne Park in, of 95,000 in 2027. Just those two because they have no planning currently.
And you're moving those to?
To 2028.
2028. I have no objection.
Any further discuss, Director Perry, I'm sorry.
Uh, it's, it should be a very quick question. Um, and, and I apologize, I didn't get them all written down. I know at one point, I believe Director Dreschek listed the playground projects that are in motion. And I wasn't positive that they were all captured. Is, can, can we?
Got them?
Are you, either reiterate?
I can read them again. Yep.
Or, or just allow for those that are currently in motion to remain in motion?
Yeah. So I, so my original motion named them, so, but Brittany can record it too in writing if she wants. So it was to remove the Lake Newport tot lot from the 2026 capital budget in the amount of 90,000 and the Lake Anne Park tot lot for 95,000 in the CIP for 2027, moving both to the 2028 capital budget. That summarizes the full and amended motion.
Thank you.
I, and I just want to be clear, I did not say to change the funding for CIP. This is moving projects.
Mm-hmm. Okay. No further, further, okay, I was just, wasn't sure if that was a hand raise or it is the phantom thumb. So I am going to move to ask for, call the motion, call the question. All in favor? One, two, three.
Aye.
Four.
Aye.
Six. I think we've got six in favor, against, one against. Six and, six, one. All right. So we're ready to move to the next motion.
Wait, I thought that was a substitute motion. Don't we have to vote on it again?
I amended it. I didn't substitute it.
Okay.
So we don't have to roll it up, vote again.
Okay, thank you. I move that the board remove the 42,000 ground maintenance line item from the 2026, 2027 budget.
Ground, where's that one?
There isn't a second. Let's move on.
I move that the board maintain investment and reserve funding at the 2025 levels, removing the proposed 200,000 increase from the 2026, 2027 budget.
Is there a second? I see no second.
This takes us through all of our budget motions.
Thank you, everybody, for getting through that and it is now 8:10. And though.
Can I offer a motion?
Please.
Mr. President, and I am going to guide in this. We show every year for the last several years that our triple RF funds generate interest and dividends of around 300,000.
Mm-hmm.
But we don't, um, include it in the triple RF budget. We don't include it in the operating budget. It just sits there. I, I would like the board to direct staff to take those interest and dividend revenues and apply it to either reduce the operating budget or to reduce the, uh, the CIP contribution to the extent of $150,000. That way, if, if we don't earn all the money that we have earned over the last several years, we don't run a deficit, but by the same token, we're just not earning this money and have it sit in a corner.
Mm-hmm.
And so it's, it's to reflect, it's income to us and that income should be reflected in our budget and not just put over into one corner.
Do we have a second?
I will second it.
It's been made, the motion has been made and seconded, discussion, and I see that our CFO has a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a couple of terms and things. So dividends and interest, we actually do budget for. They're in the finance cost center. That's forecasted about 570K for this year. And I have it in the budget currently at like 500K for next year, thinking that interest rates might, may come down a little. So we do budget and count the dividends and interest. What we don't count on are the unrealized gains and losses that we get from our market investments. So the money with Rafa primarily, we, we don't budget anything for that and we don't see that income in our kind of management numbers that we show, we do in the audited financial statements, but, so just to clarify. So we, we don't count on that and we do historically, you know, get some market gains from that, but it is dependent on the stock market. So, you know, some years you may not get it.
Director Farrell?
If I can ask, that number over the last many years has been what?
I mean, it probably averages over 200K a year. I mean, this year so far, we've made over 400K.
In unrealized gains.
Unrealized gains.
In unrealized gains. Understood. But the, the point of it is, is that if those get realized over the course of the year, right? They should be being used to the extent that we realize them. I understand. They should be being used to either reduce the assessment or reduce the capital fund contribution. I mean, are, these unrealized gains, are you telling me it's paper?
Well, they're sitting with Rafa. We could sell them or tell Rafa we want to, you know, cash out and transfer some over to our, you know, tourist bank accounts.
And I'm saying to do that for half of those unrealized gains. Is there a reason not to do that?
It would just reduce our reserve. So, you know, it's a question of how much of the triple RF reserve account we want to maintain.
Well, we have $4 million in the reserve account. We're not taking any money. We're not reducing that $4 million. This is money that would be.
I think it's like 4.8 now, you know, whatever it is, and we would reduce, it would reduce that.
It wouldn't reduce the 4A.
It would reduce it. That, I mean, the, the gains are part of what is in the reserve account. I mean, that's, that's included. I mean, every month when I show, I mean, it's every month in fiscal. We only do it with the board periodically. But when I show those numbers for capital, you'll kind of see how much we have in the capital accounts and triple RF and CARF. And those numbers do include the gains. I don't know if you can recall the sheet that it kind of talks about. You start with the beginning of the year and then what we added from the, you know, beginning of the year budget and then the gains that we've gotten from dividends and interest and from the market gains. That's all kind of additive and we, we do count all that.
So, Mr. President, with your indulgence, so what I'm hearing from this is that our the size of the pot that we're carrying get, this year will get bigger by the $400,000?
Correct.
So we'll go from 4 million to? 4.8?
Two.
To 5.2? And if that's the case, do we really need to be, because the working group talked about throwing an extra $200,000 into that 4.8? And I'm going, okay, wait a second. Why do we need to do that and, why do we need to do extra 200,000 and we're making 400,000 in unrealized gains? I mean, it, it seems to me that we're building up a fund more, larger than the working group even considered.
So, um, Mr. Vroom, if I can. We just did a motion. No, it didn't pass, but there was just a motion made that removed the proposed 200,000 increase from the 2026 and 2027 budget. Would you suggest that we could pass that based on the $400,000 that we're likely to make this year?
So what you would do from a budgetary standpoint, I'd suggest is you just contribute less to capital. If you recall, we already proposed a 500K reduction in the contribution to capital pulling from what we called the, what's the right term? I'm sure I get it right, unassigned funds. And it's, I mean, I have it here. It's that capital sheet that we, you know, we show. And so, you know, as of last month, I'm in the process of updating it for fiscal. I'll have it out tomorrow. But as of last month, the unassigned triple RF was a little over 5 million. And the way that builds up over the years, one of the ways is from these unrealized gains. It's also from if we have project variances to the good and, and we want to maintain a minimum balance of, you know, whatever, 4 million or, you know, something. But we did suggest, if you recall, that because we had some extra unassigned money above the minimum balance, we suggested that we use 500K of that in the draft one budget. So there's already some of the, you know, 500K factored in. If you want, we could factor some more in and it would just draw down that reserve a little bit more.
I think we, I think what I'm hearing is we're meeting the intent in the budget already. We, so I, I think you don't need to sell unrealized gains to make realized gains in order to meet the intent that's, that you're talking about because it's already happening in the budget.
I guess what, based on, Mr. President, I'll, based on the work we did, it, it struck me that we, we could wind up with that fund going over $6 million in a couple of years. And there was no case made that we needed to hold on to $6 million. That 4 million was enough. And I, I'm trying to say, okay, if 4 million is enough, do something so that it, that it doesn't become six or eight or 10 million through inaction. That's the, that's what I'm trying to accomplish with my motion. I, I mean, I want to keep that fund at about 4 million, maybe a little bit more. And to the extent that we have more than 4 million, let's cash it in. Let's cash some in and, and use it so that we can reduce, I'm sorry, so that we can reduce the assessment.
Director Dreschek.
Okay, so staff has already recommended the 600,000, yes. But they also in their second memo recommended that we underfund even more. I, I like the wording of the motion so that future boards understand that there is unrealized capital gains that go into that fund. And the reason I think it's important for the board to understand and therefore have as a line item in the budget, understanding it reduces, um, is that we understand where we have been getting all of this excess money, year after year after year, to put in motions towards the end of the budget process to fund triple RF is because we weren't budgeting for those unrealized gains. And so the money in the account kept increasing and it wasn't seen. It was, I mean, it took me, I've five or six years now to understand that the reason why the money kept increasing, even though we kept having these projects and we kept doing the projects and I understood that the carry forward list and I understood. and I understood, you know, that we don't spend money, the full amount of money on every project. But as much as we used that money that I felt like I understood as a board member, we still have this $300,000 on average number that we're increasing that account by every year and not seeing it as a board. So I like using, and I would use $300,000. I'd actually use more than the $300,000. But I think at least $150,000 is a good start for a board, year after year, to say, hey, how much are we going to see in those Rafa accounts every year as investment earnings that isn't coming from the membership but can fund Triple RF projects? So I support the motion and believe that staff, in one way or another, actually support more than the $150,000 that is being proposed.
So just for clarity's sake, are we asking, or would this be satisfied by, like Draft Two of the budget has a line item in which we just, line item to actually delineate exactly what we've got there? Or do we want to say, do we want to say exactly what we've got? Or do we want to, you know, look at some number, like Director Druszk said, like the 150 or, you know, 200 or the full 400 on the budget?
Another way of getting there, and I'm happy, we don't need to dispose of this issue tonight. I can carry it over to the next budget. But another way of getting there is to say that the Triple RF fund should not be greater than X. Right? The reserve part, the unassigned part. And that way, that those unrealized gains would be cashed in and used to fund Triple RF. But would leave us with a rainy day fund of capital expenses and be using the money we're making, 300, 400, 500, whatever, so that it doesn't just keep growing. And if we set that number, could set it as policy. But I just feel like this fund is growing and it's not being accounted, we're not, we're not holding ourselves accountable to our membership on what that money is being used for other than just stashing it in a mattress. And so I'm happy to, with consent of the body, withdraw my motion, but...
I'm supportive.
I'm sorry?
I'm supportive. She's seconding it.
Oh.
Let's do the vote. Michael seconded it.
Well, with the board's indulgence, a member of the Finance Committee and the working group that Director Farrell has referenced has made a comment in text on Zoom. And if Brittany, you can bring it up. I'll read it into the record. So where are we referred to? Okay. I'll read the last one into the record. Lake Newport pool alone will cost $6 million to renovate. And to date, nothing has been done to reserve for those costs.
That's not true. That's not true.
Okay. Just throwing it out there. Feel free to refute.
It said renovations at Lake Newport are in the CIP.
What does this have to do with what John's talking about?
I'm reacting to a comment in the chat.
If we do this, we're going to have to do this for every comment ever on the chat.
We don't. This was a special case because the person who made the comment is on finance and is also on the working group that we've referenced several times in this discussion.
So...
I would not do this every time.
Okay. Just making sure.
Director Mullinex.
I guess I'm against drawing down the reserve fund just for the sake of taking out unrealized gains. If there's a good measure or good reason, other than that, we can talk about that. But costs only go up. We need the reserves. I agree with the concept of having a floor, but I don't think it should be a fixed number. It should be inflation adjusted every year so that the floor is always going up.
I don't oppose that.
So I don't think we're ready to have a substantive conversation on this.
Well, we need to do it before we adopt the budget. I'm happy to have that conversation at the next meeting. But we have to find a mechanism to stop allowing it to just continuously accumulate. I mean, as we discussed at the working group, it's hard to imagine a capital expense that isn't in the CIP that would cause us to need that $4 million that wouldn't be otherwise covered by insurance policies or that kind of thing. So $4 million appears to be more than enough of a cushion. The question is, does it need to be 5.2 or 5.8 or 6? And I don't think there's a case for that. And to the extent that we can use that money to fund the CIP, that's less money we have to collect from our members. And that is going to do more to hold down the assessment than all of the motions we considered tonight.
Okay. I think we've had enough discussion on this one. We're going to call a question.
No, I'm asking for it to be deferred. This question to be deferred, this issue to be deferred.
So you're, you, do you...
I'm going to move to defer it to the, to the next board meeting.
Director Lanza.
I would like to propose a substitute motion, just changing the wording so it reads 50% of the prior year's unrealized gains.
We just made a motion to defer this until the next board meeting. So I don't think we're going to make, you can make that change at the next board meeting.
I mean, he could make a new motion.
Yeah, he's going to make a new motion.
We haven't...
We deferred the Rafa...
We haven't approved the deferral yet.
Yeah, true.
Is there an objection?
That's what I'm waiting to see. Because when you deferred earlier, Director Shanta said she actually supported going forward. So she was saying that she did not support deferring. If I'm correct with that, Director Shanta.
You are correct, sir.
Awesome. So we are...
So I'm moved to defer the question of the Triple RF carryover amount and unrealized earnings to the next meeting.
Is there a second to that?
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm fine with that.
Are you seconding that?
The Triple RF carry forward.
Right.
I'm sorry, does, I'm fine with that mean that you're seconding his motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so, but I want to make sure I understood the motion.
I want to come back with a better, a more well-worded motion to capture Director Mullinex's concerns and at the same time, prevent this fund from growing like topsy.
Okay. So he's talking about the funding, the year-over-year funding amount, not funding from a, what are we doing for 2026 specifically? He's talking about a minimum. So I will, I'm fine with that. I second moving on to the next.
Motion made and seconded. We've had lots of discussions. I think we're good with this. All in favor?
Of defer.
Yes. Of deferring.
Aye.
Aye.
Four, five, six. Director Lanza?
I'm staying.
Okay. So it's 6:01.
So I would like to talk about 2026 contributions to Triple RF, which is different than the motion. So by my account for Draft Two, because I would like a nice, clean Draft Two, we have moved the Hook Road project to 2027. We could choose not to fund it in 2026 thereby reducing our contribution to Triple RF by 250,000. We have moved hot lots in the amounts of 90 and 95,000 to 2028. We could also not fund, reduce our contribution by 185,000. I believe that there is $100,000 in unassigned funds in Triple RF, $128,000 in CARF projects that are unassigned, that is sitting in that fund. There is obviously the question about the investment earnings.
I'm sorry, did you say 128?
128 in CARF unassigned projects. And then I believe we are sitting at 90,000. Maybe it's a little bit more because it's been a few weeks in under-budget projects for 2025 that we already funded but have not, didn't need to spend all the funds in. Am I speaking somewhat correctly? These are the questions that I want to make sure that we understand. So when we're throwing out contribution questions or how much to fund for next year, we're speaking intelligently. And there's been multiple memos. And I know it can be confusing. But that's based on the latest information that I felt like I read. There's money sitting out there that we could use to change the contribution in 2026 without having a full conversation on what should the ongoing fund be sitting at.
What was the last number you said? I'm sorry, I'm trying to keep track.
90,000 in 2025 under-budget projects.
Thanks.
And I would ask, am I close?
So I think what I heard, I don't have, everything you just rattled off, I don't have memorized. That's on me, I think.
No, no, no. I can show them to you, too.
What I think, what I think I heard was, please bring back a second draft CIP that includes as much either cost, underruns, or savings, or canceled projects to offset the contribution to the membership as possible and make that clear to the board that that effort has taken place. That's what I think I heard.
I motion that.
Second.
What Pete said has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I hear no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous for what Pete said. And I think we are now, it's 8:30. We're a little bit past time.
I have a couple more.
If we can pause, please, because I think a lot of us need to take a little break.
Oh, yes. I just saw what I had on the top.
So absolutely. We will come right back to the topic at 8:45. It's 8:32 now. So 1:13 minute. Thank you. Thank you.
The transfer fee line item in the budget as well as the non-member fees to match the new assessment number for non-member passes. So the transfer fee is one, and the second one is the non-member fees that are tied to our assessment number. Or we have been tying to our assessment number, but it is not in draft one.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion? Dr. Perry.
I thought that motion had already been made and carried last year. To have that be an ongoing thing.
Good. Hey, Pete.
Margaret, I think, I think what Director, sorry, what Director Justreck is saying is that the revenue in Budget One was not reflective of a 923 non-member pass. So we just need to update the revenue in Budget Two to match whatever the draft assessment is for Budget Two.
I see.
Okay.
One question regarding that.
You go ahead.
Both family and individual passes, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? I see none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five. That's five in favor, against?
No, nay.
One against and abstaining.
Abstaining.
Five, one, one.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
I just ask a question. I just want a clarification. What were you looking for in the transfer fee? If I didn't catch what you said.
The transfer fee, and Tony could help, is tied to the 12-month employee cost index. And it is not currently in the budget. It's about $6,000.
Like, I think I bumped it up by 2%, kind of my standard factor, and bumped it up to, I think it's 3.6%.
The issue with the transfer fee is if we do not increase it to the amount allowable per the resolution per year, we can never catch up. We can't, three years from now, say, oh, we want to catch up all those years we didn't. And so I, I'm just diligent about making sure that we are tying it to the number that we can tie it to, so that it increases the maximum amount. Because there were several years, I think it was like six or seven when I first noticed it, that we didn't increase it. So we're already, to me, behind the eight ball on what we could be charged.
I mean, I was definitely going to increase the transfer fee itself by that amount, but we can bump up the revenue a little bit, too.
Yeah.
Thanks for the clarification.
Sure. In the budget, the board has not done anything for pool funding. And the staff gave us some options in their memos. And so I asked some questions last board meeting related to pool funding. And I believe what I heard is that we would be, if we took the staff recommendation, we would be increasing the pool hours to, it was 1,046 hours, or 10,046 hours, I think. We had about 9,600 this year, minus the times where we had to close that we had budgeted for. And I'm just, I'm curious at, it's not a discussion that I felt like we have had as a group, but I believe the staff have asked us questions about it. And so I'm curious to hear where other people are. Where I am in pool funding is I actually think that the, the late hours that we added to the budget last year, like they were like four to seven, or some of them were four to nine. I actually think, based on my review, those number, those additional hours worked. Some of the other ones, I think we added, didn't necessarily work. Our Chair of our Fiscal Committee asked staff the other day about the total number of visits we had, if we had had that data. And I believe it was around 119,000 as we closed out the pool season for this year. And we had added all these hours, right, for 2025, that weren't in 2024, which is around 8,000 hours. So in 2024, it was like 136,000 visitors we had had. And so we actually went down in the number of total visitors in 2025, when I believe the board's intent in adding funding for 2025 was to increase hours. So I think the staff have, you know, a plan to make some changes to the pool funding schedule, of which I'm, I'm okay with, with some of them. I'm a little questioning on the Shadowwood changes. I think it's more related to the pool heater. That's there. But we did not see the Shadowwood hours increase this year, even though we added a bunch of extra hours. So that gives me pause. But I believe in Draft Two of the budget, we should give some direction to the staff related to pool funding. And I don't think that we need over 10,000 hours. I'm somewhere between 9,000 and 9,500 hours. That's, that's kind of where I am, but I defer to the staff as to what the pool schedule should look like, based on the data that they have. But I believe we're, we're funding it by more than that in the current draft. Right? Okay. So we, we could potentially make that direction and get a Draft Two as a reduced, a reduced assessment by taking the pool funding down from where it is currently. And I would be in support of, of making some direction to staff to move that direction for Draft Two.
Do you have, do you have a motion for that?
I'm more curious as to what other board members think before I throw a motion and then we have to amend it and replace it six times.
Join the fray. I think we, we talked about this a little bit in the budget breakout groups, and I think that there is consensus around Director Justreck's thought process. I recall 10,000 hours being the number that we kind of settled on, but not prescribing that number specifically. I, I do think that there was a favoring of Season Two and Season Three over Season Five, but not, not a prescription in the number of hours, other than I think what was initially proposed was, we deemed was too high. Yeah.
Director Perry.
So I certainly appreciate the very detailed synopsis and, and discussion starter. I guess one thing and that was kind of questioned and asked about last time. You know, those extended hours, it doesn't necessarily take into account those people who yes, we had less people visit overall, but, but I still am not clear that we have the numbers for how long did those people stay? So if someone arrived at, you know, 4:00 PM and stayed till 9:00 PM, for example, and I recognize that as an arbitrary number, no one needs to, you know, arbitrary, but if someone came at four and stayed till nine, you're not going to have continuing people locking in, or signing in, or carding in, or whatever you're looking for. I would be more inclined to say, don't raise it at all. Leave it at the levels we had this year. Maybe make some changes to where those hours lie. For example, if, you know, up Shadowwoods and take down somebody else's slightly, because you think that that would be better. I'm all for that. But allow staff one more year of data collection, and then come back in 2027, 2026, and decide up, down, stay at that point.
Anyone else? Director Farrell?
This may shock some folks, but I find myself in agreement with Director Perry. My view here is, this was the first year that we had all 15 pools open on an extended schedule. I will guarantee you that a substantial fraction of our membership didn't know that and adjusted their participation based on the schedule as they knew it the year before. Certainly, when I had four young kids, I didn't familiarize myself with the schedule changes, one, one year to the next, and acted on my prior experience. We've made an expansion of hours. If after the end of the third year, we find that, that people aren't participating, I would be open to that conversation after a third year. But I'm not prepared to do that after one year. The other point is, I, I believe that opening up a heated pool earlier in the year will actually get more participation, and that would apply to Shadowwood in, what, Season Two and Three? I think the staff wants to open up Shadowwood during the earlier season, and I, I would, because that's my neighborhood pool, I'm going to support that. I, I would like to have a heated pool closer to my neighborhood earlier in the season. So I, I'm not, I'm not interested in wasting money to keep pools open when no one's in the pool. But I do think we need to invest in more communication to our membership as to what our pool, what our extended season is. Because that's change we just made last, this past season, this past year, operating year. And I, I'd like to, I'd like to let that run for a while. And then if after the third year, we're not seeing those hours being used, one example, I think we had this conversation, was we had quote-unquote fitness hours, and that deprived children of an opportunity to go to the pool after school, or after working hours. And, and it was understandable that we were doing that, except that in a lot of cases, the adults were not using it for fitness, but for lounging. I don't know, is there another verb I should be using? Please suggest it. So I think there's, we're going through a transition, and, and to make changes based on one season, I think is hasty. So I'm happy to leave the hours the way they are, except for that enhancement to Shadowwood. And let's see what, and enhance the communication to our membership and see how it goes.
So Director Justreck, is there a question that you wanted to raise? If not, I'm going to move, move this on.
I guess I would motion to leave the operating hours for pools in 2026 at the 2025 levels. Add Season Two Shadowwood hours in the amount of 19,000, and ask staff to adjust the schedules according to the data they received in 2025 to the best of their knowledge.
Brittany, have you captured that?
According to the data they received for, yeah.
Okay.
So we're leaving the pool hours at the 96, 69. We're adding Season Two Shadowwood, and we're asking staff to adjust the schedules based on their best knowledge of the data.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion?
The, the net result of that is a decrease in the budget ask for 2026, right? Even though we're adding 19,000, it is a net decrease.
It is, it is a net decrease, right?
Okay.
Yeah, everyone's, yes, yes. That was the intent, so, yes, I'm glad everyone's shaking their head.
Any further discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five? That's five in favor, against?
I'll say aye, but I
Okay, that's six in favor, against? And abstaining?
Abstain.
Six, zero, one. Thank you.
My last motion is to have staff review all the functional budgets that had expense increases over 20% and see if any additional adjustments could be made in Draft Two.
Is there a second?
Sure. My motion was to ask the staff to look at any functional budgets that had expense increases of over 20% and see if adjustments can be made in Draft Two.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion, please. Director, Mr. Cummins.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand the message. So if this passes, we would look at those functional budgets and unilaterally decide if they could be lowered? Or you want us to bring back a report with where all those things are, with some recommendations?
I would like to have staff make adjustments.
Okay.
To see if, if they can, they can be lowered.
But no requirement to lower them?
Nope.
Come back with an explanation. Okay? Understand.
Okay. End of discussion? All in favor? One, two.
Aye.
Aye.
Four. That's five, and six, I think Director Perry's, seven. Seven. It's unanimous. Okay, that was the last one. Anyone else have anything they need to add for the good of the order, for the budget session discussion? Hearing nothing, we're moving to Item H.
President Johnson, just on a status check.
You wanted to check in.
So your budget calendar contemplates a draft budget being released tomorrow. That will not happen. We typically need three or four business days to get a new budget out. Monday is company holiday. So I am going to work with the staff to do the best we can to get a budget out at the end of the day on Tuesday, and certainly no later than, than Wednesday. So the three of us will get together and, and start hammering out the new budget.
Wednesday. Yeah. We def, we, I, I appreciate that, but fiscal, fiscal has to have it, or then it also throws the board off from our next meeting.
Well, fiscal will have it just a day early. You said end of day, end of day Tuesday? Same day. So now we've got a great, great amount of time to do analysis, but it is what it is. Ashley? Proceed.
Why don't I do a, a brief update, introduction, sorry? So I think this is one of the first times you've had a chance to see Ashley Wilkerson in action, our, our new HR manager. So looking forward to have her have an opportunity to walk you through what I think is one of the most important things we've gotten done. I have talked to you several times about wanting to get the employee handbook updated. The last time the employee handbook was adopted was 2018. That's actually two CEOs ago, from where we are now. So we have handed this to Ashley, and she's only been here like about six months. So she's been able to make a substantial impact internally for the organization. So what I was hoping to have her do, she put together a video for you all, but maybe cover a few of the highlights, and then open up to questions to remind the board, you are in a position, we will need you to adopt the final document, and then we'll put it into place. So I'll turn it over to Ashley.
Good evening. As Mac said, this handbook was one of the top items for me to work on when I got here. So within six months, we have a fully working draft, so I'm excited to walk through it today with you all. It underwent a pretty comprehensive review, both with our HR department, senior leadership team, as well as a dual legal review with both general counsel and labor counsel. Also, as Mac mentioned, I put together an informational video, so hopefully you all have had an opportunity to see that. So with that being said, I'm, I'm happy to take your questions.
Looking around for questions?
I just want to say, thank you so much for bringing this forward. It's overdue, and it's a first great start. I've identified for Ashley that I think we need an AI usage policy, and she did let me know that that is being reviewed with IT, because I think that should be part of the employee manual. And then I raised another part on documentation process of investigations, which she also let me know that this is an SOP, and it'll be available when needed. But overall, thank you. Great work.
Thank you.
I motion to direct the CEO to make corrections and consider edits to the employee policy manual based on board feedback, and also to assign a subgroup of the board not to exceed four members selected by the board president to work with general counsel and other association staff as applicable to review and propose updates to the association's governing documents that overlap with the employee policy manual, including but not limited to whistleblower harassment and compensation philosophy, returning to the board for consideration no later than December 2025.
So second to that motion?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, discussion. Director Perry?
I fully support requesting that staff utilize the feedback from the board. I am not in support of another board committee. I think staff can handle reading the suggestions and moving forward on their own.
I agree with Margaret.
Any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
I'm going to make a substitute motion.
We're in the middle of taking the vote. You can make a motion afterwards. It's two in favor, against?
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five. So two, two, five. Okay. Did you want to make your, your other motion, Izzy?
That motion failed, correct?
Yep.
I was going to say yes to everything, but striking out the part of the president appoints a subcommittee of four people to work on this.
So who would work on it in your staff?
I think we have a board, I think we have feedback. We're ready to share that feedback, and I think staff can interpret the feedback.
Okay, I, can I make a clarifying point?
Please.
Okay. So I want to make sure that the board understood my motion. My motion was to, to move forward with the employee policy manual with the board feedback. Right? And then Mac makes those decisions on what to change in the, in the manual. The second part of my motion is related to the association's governing documents. We have policies that overlap with the employee policy manual, like the whistleblower policy. There's a staff version, and there's an association governing document resolution related to it, conflict of interest. That they're, they're separate documents. And I want to make sure that whatever updates were made to the policy manual also make their way into the governing documents of the association, so they do not conflict with each other.
That is not what I heard. For your proposal.
That's what my, that's what it says.
May I ask that you make those two separate motions, please, Jennifer? That may be helpful.
And can't Tony just handle to ensure that there is congruence in the employee manual and governing documents and not require a meeting of four people of the board to work?
I, I take no posi, oh, I love working with my directors. I take no position on whether or not we need to work as a working. I do think the timetable, if we're amending governing documents and we're doing a deep dive, is untenable. December is to make the, to go through and find the conflict of interest, the bylaw provision, the deed provision. I just think it's, it's an untenable timeframe.
Let me ask, is there a practical reason why we would have to do this by December? Or could we have this be like an ongoing task that you work on?
So to the extent that the documents conflict with each other, that is a problem. However, the employee manual is intended to be an internal-facing document that governs employees. The resolutions is a external-facing document that governs the members. So it's important is, can we pass the employee manual without changing the resolutions? I think so. And, I mean, obviously, we should get them on the same page, but I don't think that the resolutions necessarily bar anything. Now, the whistleblower policy is something separate. That needs to match up, and Ashley and I have talked about, because that is a internally-facing procedure. But that's not in a resolution. That's just, you know, an internal policy. Similarly, the discrimination resolution, if it gets passed, is a member-to-member issue, and it's not governed by the the handbook. So I think we could probably do it. But
By it, you mean the
Pass one, and then ha, and then give me a, give me till the early part of next year to match it up to the resolutions? The very early part of next year? Like in like January.
December was a date I picked up. You want to pick March of next year, I don't care. I think that the issue is, I sent out, as requested, a motion. I asked board members to get back to me if they had questions, or they disagreed. I heard zero from any of you. And then you voted on something you misunderstood, but is very clear in, in the language. So I'm, I'm frustrated by that. But you guys motion however you'd like. Kim, Brittany, I will send you the written for the document.
So I do have a second to this motion. Motion's made and seconded, I think we've had enough.
We voted on mine, and it failed.
Yes, we're talking about Izzy's now. Oh, who was the second? Was there a second to yours, Izzy?
I don't know with that motion.
I don't believe so, because then everybody started cross-talking. So there is no motion to be made, but Brittany, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Thank you.
Okay, since it hasn't been seconded, did you want to make a motion to the effect of what Tony was just discussing?
I think
Sorry.
I don't want to put words in Director Shanna's mouth, but I think what I heard her say is move to instruct the CEO to instruct general counsel, actually, I worked, report to the general counsel, move to instruct the general counsel to review the employee handbook as a, and compare it and contrast it to the association's resolutions, and amend such resolutions as necessary to to not conflict with the employee handbook, and to present such to the board no later than March of 2026.
That sounded exactly like what Izzy said to me. Is there a second for, for that?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
I have.
Oh, discussion, please.
Okay, so I believe that there are some things that need to be discussed, and I'm going to vote against it. I have full, that doesn't mean I don't have full faith in our general counsel. I'm just letting you know, chances are, when those resolutions come back, they'll have to be deferred, because I'm going to have edits to them.
Further discussion?
I just want to state something clear, because I didn't like the accusation that I heard, but to be fair, the emails that were sent were sent yesterday to us with the motion. So I apologize to Jennifer for not reading it in time, because she does deserve a reply from board members, but I do require more notice than this. So I'll just save that for the record. And I don't think we should be doing these type of negative comments, because it just, it kills morale. I'm just going to say it. because it just, it kills morale. I'm just going to say it right off the bat. And I know, and I know morale for you is also down because we didn't reply to you, but it doesn't help discussion.
Point taken. Thank you, Izzy. I will, I will try to send them earlier than I have.
And, and, and for the record, my, I think what Margaret and I were saying was strike from the motion, Tony. Assign a subgroup of the board not to exceed four members selected by the board president to work with the general counsel. That was my objection to the motion. And so the motion I made was strike that out.
So can I inquire, Mr. President?
Okay, and then after, after your Director Farrell, I just want to get this conversation tighter. So please go ahead.
We got this hundred and one-page document on Friday. Does the maker of the motion intend that all nine of us give a page-by-page commentary to the head of HR? And so the head of HR is going to get nine submissions with edits on a hundred and one pages?
I already gave Ashley my comments and I read. So if the board has direction for Ashley, it should be given to her as well as Tony. Just like nine of us have all given direction before in previous items. If we don't want to vote on ninety-one pages, then.
Hundred and one.
Hundred and one, apologies, then maybe the ones that are the meatier topics should just be discussed. And that's it and we move on. I don't think we all need to give red lines on everything.
Well, some of us believe they need to. So how do you contemplate?
Okay, we, like I said, after that, we were going to tighten it, so.
I'm asking the question of the maker of the motion. How does she contemplate that happening?
Ashley, how would you like to receive feedback?
I'm happy to receive feedback from individual board members if that's easiest.
So we have a motion on the floor and I'd like us to complete the motion before we continue conversation, which we will then continue using another motion. We, we're kind of just getting out of control here. So all in favor of Izzy, of the motion, did we get a second, actually, on your motion?
I'm not sure if the motion that I gave.
Yes.
Was the intent of Izzy, so.
Agreed.
Because.
Okay.
She made a correction saying she just wanted Jennifer's original motion minus the working group.
So Izzy, could you repeat your motion exactly the way you intended it, please? Because you are, you do have a second.
Motion to direct the CEO to make corrections and consider edits to the employee policy manual based on board feedback and other association staff as applicable to review and propose updates to the association's governing documents that overlap with the employee policy manual, including but not limited to whistleblower harassment and compensation philosophy, returning to the board for consideration no later than March of 2026.
And there is a second for that. So Izzy. So this is actually just, Tony, correct, correct me, where are we? This is like the.
Get a second.
We're at like the fourth iteration of this motion.
I will get a second. I will second.
Can we all just keep it, just everyone just let Tony speak, please. Go ahead, Tony.
So I think for the sake of clarity, you should get a second on this one.
I appreciate that. Can I have a second for Izzy's motion?
For the fifth time, I'll give a second.
I appreciate that for all five times. Um, I don't think we need any further comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four.
Aye.
Five, five in favor, against, two against, motion carries.
It's out of order. That motion is out of, the staff cannot carry out that motion. Because as Tony told us, the whistleblower one is not in, and the compensation philosophy is not in. I, I tried.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm unclear. Why can't Tony address the whistleblower?
It doesn't matter. We're not, we're going to continue the conversation. The vote is done. Thank you very much. We can have the conversation offline. I think that concludes this, uh, section of the meeting. Thank, thank you, Ashley.
I'm the next one too.
You're in the next one as well. So please. Discuss the CEO timeline with us.
President Johnson, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I am clear. So the motion's related to making sure we have consistency between the HR manual and other governing documents and rectifying any of those things. The board still needs to take affirmative action on the HR manual. I think I'm understanding that you don't want to take that action tonight because some members still want to review and give general comments on the HR manual. Would you like us to schedule the HR manual for some subsequent date or I can take it up with the scheduling subcommittee or?
That is a delightful question. So the folks who had issues with the HR manual, where do we stand? I throw it out to the floor.
I, I think there's a, if I'm correct, there's a, no, never mind.
I, I think it's our judiciary duty to pass documents that are finalized. So I personally feel uncomfortable passing a draft that still needs edits. So I think we have to put in new business at some point, another time to actually vote on the employee handbook.
So Mac, let's move that to the scheduling group and see where we go from there.
Can I make a suggestion?
Please.
Can you set a time limit for board members to give us feedback? And then I can work with the scheduling group on like when the right time is to come back so that we just have some date where we can expect things. Ashley can start compiling them and figure out where we are on the thing.
That's a good idea. Izzy, did you want, want to add a date to your motion and then make a subsequent motion?
Can Ashley, when would you like feedback by?
Her previous motion that passed already.
Two weeks? You said two, two weeks?
Two weeks?
No.
Well, we'll see what happens.
But, Mr. President, I, I won't have time to read the other seventy pages and, and give my line.
Then you're welcome to give a substitute motion. I mean, there's not even really a motion.
But her motion didn't have it, so we can't, we can't go.
Her motion is, I understand it's two weeks.
She would, she can give another motion. She hasn't, her motion has already passed and it didn't happen. But she can give a motion to ask that that particular task be completed within X date, by X date. So.
The prior motion had a date of March. There is no motion pending as we sit here?
There is not a motion pending. And I'm asking her to meet Mr. Cummins' request if she wanted to, since she was the maker of the motion, to attribute a date, a due date to the work. So Director Santa, any thoughts?
The employee handbook is part of the CEO's goals, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct? Somebody keep me honest. So they need to be done by December thirty-first, the handbook, correct? So if Mr. Farrell needs a month, can he provide edits by October thirty-first? And that gives Ashley a month, six weeks really before the year ends. And then people start taking vacation to have the employee handbook done. We need the employee handbook by the first December, Brittany, keep me honest, um, December eleventh board meeting?
Yeah, correct.
So that is the, that is the workback timeline. So if we would like to have this completed by December eleventh, employee handbook can pass. Then Ashley needs everything done in, in October so that we can have it in the, because in November, we only have one meeting and that would be what, Brittany? November, I'm working off memory again.
November thirteenth.
Thirteenth. So can we, can we keep ourselves honest to edits by October thirty-first? Staff produces draft to the board for review for the November meeting with a final vote in December eleventh. And that keeps us with intent of the CEO goals.
Can we hear, can I take that as a motion?
I need a second, but yes, that is my motion.
Awesome. Awesome. Motion is made and seconded.
What's the motion?
Can she repeat?
The motion is to have edits by October thirty-first and staff to provide on the November meeting, thirteenth, a draft of the employee manual, period. With the intent that then we will have the muscle memory that we need to put it on the new business in November for the December meeting. That keeps us tracking with the timeline. If I'm wrong, please correct me.
Okay, I'm seeing a, a super confused face from Director Farrell, so I'm going to translate that into, I'm going to ask him to translate that into words.
I, I heard the motion and I didn't understand when was the board going to, when were board members going to be required to turn over our comments to?
October thirty-first.
End of the month, this month.
Okay, that's three weeks.
It is three weeks. Okay, motion made, seconded. There was discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
One, two, three.
Aye.
Four, five, in favor, against, two against, motion passes. So there's your, there's your timeframe.
Can I, can I beg the indulgence, can we get this document in Word sent to us?
That would be nice. Yeah. Thank you very much. I'm glad you asked that. That's something that I, I'm want to ask more of is like our Word and our PowerPoint. So if we can actually get them in Word and PowerPoint, so I can make notes, that would be wonderful. Thank you. Or Excel, Excel.
Something that lets us edit here.
Yes. Now, I'm excited about using spreadsheets, so, okay. Ashley, her two.
Her two. Okay, um, as we've entered into Q4, we're actually entering into the CEO evaluation timeline. Um, so in your packets, um, I have two copies of the CEO evaluation package. One is a redline version, um, another is a clean version. This is an adopted package from last year to my understanding. This year I am proposing minor grammatical edits as well as, um, some additional questions in the senior leadership team feedback form. So two purposes with this section, uh, one, to approve the timeline um, for the CEO evaluation process as well as to approve or, um, adopt the recommended edits to the forms themselves, to the tools. This process contains a couple of components, so feedback from the board to evaluate the CEO on his goal progress as well as leadership competencies. And then for senior leadership to also provide, um, essentially three sixty feedback to the CEO. I, in my capacity, ha- handle the administrative component of it and provide any type of administrative support to the board. Ms., uh, Director Johnson will, um, lead the process with putting together final narratives, um, presenting the final package to the CEO. I'll stop there in case there's any questions or any confusions about the package itself.
Just wanted to add before we go, I will be part of the process. I will not be writing the final narrative like we, I have in previous years because I don't hate myself that much. But, um, I am, however, looking forward to being, um, an active part of, uh, that, that development. Thank you.
So, so to, to clarify for the record, the board feedback goes to you and you hold that in confidence?
Yes.
And you work with Travis to distill that into the narrative?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes. Director Justchuk?
I believe the board feedback comes to the full board. Not, yeah, she holds it in confidence, but we receive the full feedback.
We see everybody else.
That doesn't mean we have every, everyone's names, yes. We show each other our work. Okay, just want to clarify that that's the case, right? Okay.
Okay. Any other, I'm sorry?
My, I'm, I'm fine with the edits that you made, the clarifying edits. In past years, we tried, um, to reduce the burden on the board and on the senior leadership team by condensing it, but we tried to leave some of the wording alone so that over the course of time, the words that were used to describe each didn't, had a consistent meaning. I think that the wording that you used, um, is more professional than we had previously. Um, but I didn't feel that the wording selections you chose, um, changed the meaning of, um, the intent of each one. Um, so I appreciate the work that, that you did there. I will, um, share as part of the evaluation package. I am not supportive of going outside of the procedures for, um, that we have in place related to updating, um, the, the survey, the CEO evaluation, uh, the CEO compensation piece. I don't think that it is necessary for us to go, um, outside of what we have, what that process was in the past, which is collecting information from adjoining jurisdictions. So I, I will make a motion to, uh, approve the package, but I wanted to state publicly that I don't think that we need to go to an outside agent to, to do a compensation review. I think that the process that we have that is listed in the evaluation package is, is all that we need. So I will move to approve the annual evaluation process for the CEO as outlined, including timeline, and further move to adopt the updated evaluation tool and incorporate them as necessary into Board and Association Resolution thirteen for presentation to an adoption by the board at the October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five regular board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's six in favor, uh, against?
Abstain.
And one abstention, six, zero, one. Ashley, thank you very much.
Jennifer, could you send me that motion?
Uh, yes, Tony sent it to us, the email earlier. Yeah, I was reading it off of that one.
All right, and just for board clarity, I skipped item I.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Perry, and I also want to thank you, Director Perry, and thank you, Director Farrell, for bringing it to my attention. Uh, my apologies to everyone involved, including Ms. Boswell, who I'm not sure, is she on the line?
No, she's not on with us because they want to.
Oh, yeah, there she is. Katie B. It's a good break to answer, yeah. Hi, Katie, this is, uh, Travis. Thank you for being on. I appreciate it. Hello. We see you, we see you and we hear you. So if you're prepared to provide us your presentation, we would appreciate it.
I'm sorry, you're going in and out. It's hard to hear.
Yes. So your, uh, presentation was deferred until the October twenty-third meeting, yes?
Yes.
Okay. What did we have to discuss tonight? I was told there was, uh, Director Farrell?
There, there was an email from our, uh, committee vice chair. And I simply wanted this pulled forward so that we incorporate that email into our minutes so that folks understand why, uh, it's being deferred. And I, I don't, I didn't intend for our vice chair of the elections committee to have to stay up until nine thirty to get that done. So I'm sorry for that, but all I wanted to do was get that, that email from her into our minutes.
Okay, so can we take a, um. Without objection, can we? There we go, without objection, can we include that in the minutes? I see no dissent from the board, so yes. Katie, thank you very much for taking the time to be with us this evening.
She's also here this evening in case the board had any questions related to the item in executive session. So just wanted to.
Oh, the contract.
On the contract?
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, if you, you can hang on for us. It's trying to stay too long. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Because the next item on our agenda is executive session.
Mr. President, I move to convene an executive session to consult with the legal counsel and to discuss contractual and personal matters.
This is our second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Directors Lanza and Santa.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, thank you.
And Katie's going to be with us in executive session.
So we'll do her first.
... to avoid the replacement of the asset and to extend the life of the asset. Deferred maintenance is referenced throughout the reports and is the dollar value of maintenance and repairs that have not been performed when they could have or should have been. Deferred maintenance is a driver of the Rest and Association CIP and will continue to be for multiple years, based on what we're seeing in these reports. Deferred maintenance should not be thought of as a bad thing, but something that we should address in order to maintain the quality of an asset and to extend the life of an asset. So now we'll get into our first reporting of our community buildings. The Brown's Chapel building located in Brown's Chapel Park received an FCI of .129 or in good condition. Thirty-eight percent of the assets were found to be in excellent condition, 24% were found to be in good condition. None of the assets at Brown's Chapel were found to be in crisis condition and very few were in poor condition. Over the next three to five years, the Brown's Chapel building will need to have a few issues addressed, including finishes on the ceilings and walls, which could include paint. Then we look at things like windows, doors, plumbing, and electrical service, all things that you would think of as regular or normal in a building with the age of Brown's Chapel. Next, we look at the CSF Building or the Central Services Building. This is the building that houses our CSF team. Fifty percent of that building was found to be in excellent condition. Over 30% of the building was found to be in good or fair condition. None of the assets on the site of the Central Services Building were found to be in crisis condition, with a building FCI of good under 0.77. A few near-term investments for us to keep in mind at the Central Services Building include electrical service and distribution, wiring, and a water heater. Again, all maintenance items that are regular for a building that is used in the way that the CSF building is used. The CSF warehouse is an opportunity for staff to store supplies and equipment. This FCI was found to be zero, meaning that the building is in excellent condition, very few items to report on here. Over the next few years, we'll look to replace the water heater and will monitor the energy supply to the building, which has an RUL of approximately 18 years. The Lake House. The Lake House is an event space owned by the Association near Brown's Chapel Park, received an FCI of .161 or found to be in fair condition. Over 65% of the assets in the building were found to be in excellent or good condition, and about 25% were found to be in fair condition. None of the assets at the Lake House were found to be in crisis condition. A few investments for us to think about in the near-term CIP at the Lake House include some split unit systems or heating and cooling systems within the building, windows and doors, perhaps we'll evaluate the roof over the next few years, and the communication alarm and telephone system. Again, this is regular maintenance for a building that is used in the way that the Lake House is used. Staff will build these items into the CIP in future years. And one of the crown jewels of Rest and Association, the Walker Nature Center. Over 90% of the assets in the building were found to be in excellent or good condition, which is great news for the Association. A building FCI of just over zero means that we're finding a facility in great condition. A few items for us to think about over the next three to five years include controls for the geothermal heating and cooling system and some communication items for the alarms and telephone system. Again, this is all normal maintenance and we feel as though the Walker Nature Center is in great condition. Thank you for listening to the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Looking forward to discussing these items with the Board of Directors. Thank you.
Board members, I am pleased to present an overview of the recent employee handbook update. The handbook is a critical tool that outlines our workplace policies and expectations. This review ensured our policies remain current, legally compliant, and supportive of a positive employee experience. Over the next few slides, we will walk through the purpose of the review, the process we followed, key updates, financial considerations, and next steps for board approval and implementation. The handbook review had three key purposes. First, to ensure compliance with laws and regulations. Employment laws change over time, and keeping our handbook current helps us stay compliant, protect the Association, and safeguard our employees' rights. Second, to reflect our organizational values, culture, and policies. The handbook is not just a compliance document, it's also a way to communicate who we are as an organization and how we expect to work together. And third, to streamline policies for clarity and ease of use. We've removed redundancies and simplified language so employees and managers can easily find and understand the information they need. In short, the goal is to create a handbook that is compliant, values-driven, and practical for everyday use. Our review process was designed to be thorough and comprehensive. We began with an assessment of the existing handbook, identifying compliance gaps, redundancies, and areas that needed clarification. Next, we looked at best practices from the Society for Human Resources Management, using those standards as a benchmark to ensure our policies are aligned with current HR best practices. From there, we moved into drafting and integration, where policies were consolidated, revised, and new content was added to address emerging workplace needs. To ensure accuracy, the draft went through a dual legal review with both general and labor council to confirm compliance with federal and state requirements. Finally, we sought stakeholder input by sharing the draft with senior leadership, gathering their feedback to make sure the handbook reflects our organizational culture and operational realities. This process gave us the confidence that the final handbook is both legally sound and aligned with our organization's values and goals. With the review process complete, I'd like to share the key updates and highlights from the revised handbook. Overall, the updates focus on making the handbook clearer, more consistent, and easier for employees to use, while also ensuring we remain compliant with employment laws. Some policies have been streamlined for readability, others have been updated to reflect current practices and legal requirements, and a few new sections have been added to address today's workplace needs. We've added a number of policies to ensure we remain compliant with current laws and best practices. These changes reflect both federal and state requirements, as well as our commitment to supporting employees in different circumstances. We now have clear policies covering religious practices, pregnancy and childbirth, as well as nursing employees. Alongside this, we've incorporated requirements under the Genetic Information Non-Discrimination Act, so that employees know their personal genetic or health-related information is protected. We've also addressed employment eligibility and background practices. This includes updated guidance on hiring minors, as well as the appropriate use of credit reports and background checks. Another focus area is fairness and transparency in pay. Our new wage transparency and equal pay provisions are designed to ensure employees can discuss and understand pay practices without fear of retaliation. Finally, we've expanded our leave provisions. In addition to FMLA, we now include several types of protected leave that may apply in specific situations, such as serving an election officer, civil air patrol duty, supporting crime victims, eviction-related proceedings, or even organ and bone marrow donation. This update also focuses on strengthening workplace standards and expectations. We've added a workplace misconduct policy and refreshed our language around substance abuse and drug-free workplace to clarify expectations and ensure compliance with best practices. Related to operational procedures, our weather closure protocol has been updated to align with Fairfax County Government, providing more relevancy to our location. On the topic of departures, we've updated resignation notice provisions. Employees will no longer be able to request or take PTO during their two-week notice period. This change supports fairness across teams and upholds the integrity of the established PTO payout schedule, which is based on tenure. Finally, we've enhanced expectations for alternative work arrangements. Compressed schedules or other flexible arrangements will now require signed agreements, helping both employees and managers clearly understand responsibilities and expectations. Our updated IT policies are designed to support both productivity and security in the workplace. We've clarified expectations around the use of email, internet, and social media, so employees understand what is considered appropriate and professional. We've also updated guidelines for cellphone use and stipends to ensure transparency and consistency. Security remains a top priority, so we've reinforced data security and privacy standards to protect sensitive information for both the Association and our employees. Finally, we've outlined clear procedures for reporting IT violations, so employees know how to raise concerns or report potential issues promptly. Our handbook updates also focus on enhancing performance management and career development. We've clarified the new hire probationary period to provide both employees and managers with clear expectations during the first few months of employment. We've also updated our approach to performance improvement plans, or PIPs. The language now emphasizes that PIPs are intended as a tool to support growth and improve performance, not just as documentation for termination or a punitive measure. This aligns with our broader progressive discipline policy, which has been added to ensure a transparent and consistent approach to managing performance issues. On the development side, we've added a section acknowledging career growth opportunities. Employees have access to professional development programs, as well as certification and tuition reimbursement options to support skill development. We've added several updates to clarify our compensation and payroll practices. First, we added our compensation philosophy, which explains the principles guiding pay, including market competitiveness in our pay-for-performance model. For non-exempt employees, we've clarified the timekeeping policy, where all employees in this group will be required to punch in and out as applicable. And finally, the practice of offering pay advances has been removed from salaried administration. Our leave policies have been modernized to provide clarity and additional benefits for employees. We've updated FMLA and accommodation language and clarified how differently benefits may coordinate, so employees and managers can better understand their options. But regiment leave has been enhanced to provide more support during difficult times. We've also updated our federal holiday schedule to reflect newer recognized holidays, including Juneteenth. Finally, we've added a PTO payout enhancement. Employees who retire with 20 more years of service will now receive 100% of their accrued PTO, recognizing and honoring long-term commitment to the Association. When updating the handbook, one of our priorities was making it more user-friendly. We reduced duplicative or outdated sections, so employees aren't wading through unnecessary or confusing information. The content is now better organized for digital use, making it easier to navigate and find what you need quickly. We also worked on improving the language itself, shifting to clear, plain language so policies are easier to understand for all employees. And finally, to make sure everyone can access the handbook, it will be available directly in SharePoint and ADP workforce now. That means employees can review it anytime and provide electronic and trackable acknowledgement, so we have a record of compliance. There is no immediate cash impact associated with approving the updated employee handbook. However, one policy change, paying out 100% of accrued PTO for employees who retire with 20-plus years of service, creates both a one-time and ongoing accounting impact. This adjustment will not affect the operating budget numbers reported to the board and fiscal committee, but will appear in the audited financial statements. In addition, modest ongoing accrual adjustments will occur each year as employees reach the 20-year threshold. With updated language on how various leave benefits coincide, we are placing greater emphasis on using established ancillary benefits, such as short-term disability, to reduce reliance on the medical leave bank. This shift helps lower upfront costs while still ensuring employees have the support they need during extended absences. Looking ahead, here are the next steps in the rollout of the updated employee handbook. First, the handbook requires board approval. Once approved, staff will complete the final formatting and publishing of the document. From there, we'll move into the employee rollout. This includes manager training sessions to ensure leadership understands the updates, followed by staff training sessions. The digital handbook will then be launched on ADP and will collect signed acknowledgements from all employees. Importantly, we'll treat the handbook as a living document. That means we'll monitor how the policies are working in practice, gather leadership feedback, and schedule an annual review to keep the document current. In addition, out-of-cycle reviews may be required if new federal or state employment laws come into effect. This will help ensure the handbook remains accurate and relevant for both employees and managers. Thank you for taking the time to review these updates. Our goal with this handbook revision is to create a workplace that is clear, fair, and supportive for everyone. We appreciate your engagement and commitment to understanding these changes, and we encourage you to reach out if you have any questions or need clarification on any of the policies.
All right, by unanimous consent, move to extend the meeting to end at 11:45.
Any issues? Seeing none? Approved.
Great. Move that the Reston Association Board of Directors certifies to the best of each member's knowledge that only those matters appropriate for executive session of a contractual nature involving personnel matters or involving consultation with counsel were discussed or considered by the board during executive session.
Second.
Motion is being seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous of all intenances?
All right. Move to appoint Voughtant Solutions, E. Ballot, as the association's counting agent and serve as the inspector of elections for purposes of Section 13.1-847.1A of the Virginia Non-Stock Corporation Act to receive and tabulate the 2026 Reston Association Board of Directors election and to certify the results to the Reston Association Election Committee, subject to a mutually acceptable contract agreement.
Second.
Motion is being seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous?
All right, moving on. Move to accept the LARCA pathway easement as presented in executive session and direct the CEO to arrange for the mutual execution of the document and for its recordation in Fairfax County Land Records.
Second.
Motion is being seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kind of volunteers now?
Aye.
Okay, moving to volunteers. Move to approve Halei, apologize Shakira's, for the position of member to the IT committee.
Second.
Made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
All right. Move to approve Erica Ali Rayance. Again, my apologies for the position of member to the covenants committee.
Second.
Made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Substain.
Aye.
That is 6-1, 6-0-1.
Mr. President, I move to adopt the agenda for the public hearing on October 23rd at 6 o'clock. The public hearing on the budget, member hearing. This should be member hearing on the budget. I don't want to hear from people who live on Hunter Mill Road who aren't members of the association.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is being seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. President, I move to adopt the draft agenda for the Board of Directors meeting of October 23rd, 2025, as published in our materials, with the addition that the secretary's quarterly report be added after G and before H.
Is there a second?
Brittany, to make sure she got that. Got that?
And the calendar as well? And the calendar?
Oh, the election calendar. It's deferred.
Oh, that's right. Oh, that's right. Put that right after that. So secretary quarterly report and election calendar. After common area request and before the investment risk.
Hand for Michael Lanza.
Michael Lanza, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, can we do the secretary report with more than two weeks' notice? So maybe the November meeting?
It'll be a month late at that point.
Doesn't kill anybody. All right. We can do that.
Thank you.
So then all we're doing is the election calendar?
Yeah.
Both after the common area request and before investment risks?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Is there a second for my motion, Mr. President?
Is there a second for his motion?
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. We are adjourned, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank.
Thanks.